All right, well, it's 5:30 and I think we have everyone now. So we'll go ahead and get started. So I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting. And so let's start with good of the order. Does any council member have something to bring up for the good of the order today?
Um, I do.
Go ahead. Yeah, no worries. Oh, you mean you need a couple of minutes to bring up what you're looking at or?
Well, it's, I have. Yeah, I'd like to talk about panhandling and Duvall. There's been kind of a recent experience of this in the Safeway area. I'm sure we've all seen that. And it got me a little bit about, you know, what, you know, what we can do as far as supporting people that actually need support and what we can do as far as discouraging people that don't need support. I think we're all aware that asking for help is a, is a basic human right. That's part of the First Amendment. And, and therefore, you know, everyone absolutely has the right to ask, ask for help on, especially on public, public property. But there is a difference between asking for help and scamming people and taking, taking advantage of people's goodwill and exhibiting children as objects in need of food and clothing in attempts to gain the sympathies of passerby. I think what, you know, what I saw at, at the Safeway parking lot was more of a blather. And many of us, you know, have a gut reaction. We do want to help. That's, you know, that's the right reaction. However, you have the possibility of locking in a, this kind of panhandling lifestyle, exploiting children, which I think was actually going on, attracting others that have similar fraudulent intent and detracting from the overall safety of our community. In my brief research, I understand it's very difficult to pass legislation that discourages this type of behavior, but it is possible. And I really just wanted to mention this as a heads up for the council that we may need to consider this type of thing. Especially, especially within the exploitation of children is going on, even if it's by their moms and dads, still exploitation. In my, in my opinion. Also, there's a possibility we'll see the same behavior on public property. I did go talk to the Safeway manager, by the way, and he in turn talked to his boss and then he in turn asked him to leave. I'm not aware of how successful that was, but we may, like I said, see the same thing happening on public property. There's very little right now, if anything, the police can, can do about it. And like I say, I think the council may need to consider some type of legislative action on this. That's it.
Thank you. I think it's always good to be on the proactive end of things and it sounds like a really complex topic. But is the rest, so we can't remand it to a committee? That's considered an action. We'd need it to come back, but I just, I guess from council head nods or thumbs up, I mean, is this something you'd want to come back just to discuss in general to make it maybe a recommendation to move it toward a committee to look at at some point?
Yeah, I think there is. Now, it's going to take a little bit of research, you know, more than certainly I've done so far. Seen what those cities have been successful at doing and just as importantly, seeing what they have been unsuccessful at doing because there's been a lot of court cases in Washington related to, to this. So it's, it's an area that is, we have to tread carefully.
Rest of the council, is this something you'd want to see or talk about in the future? Or you're not sure? Yes? Torn?
Yeah, it's kind of a mixed opinion. I think it would be interesting even just to pull the police, you know, department in terms of how often it is. There's just, I didn't have a lot of visibility to the city, I think, from a proactive perspective. It never hurts to educate ourselves in terms of, I don't know that I'm ready to take any type of specific action or spin things up, but just from a, from a purely educating ourselves, how about an issue? We're obviously coming into an economic downturn, so it could be more of an issue historically. I know it hasn't been a problem, but, but just generally, I think it could be interesting.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Mayor. Um, I, I think I could speak on behalf of the police chief and say that when there are folks that are homeless in town, that they do try and provide access to services. So the first place to start would probably be asking the police department to do just kind of an overview of the complaints that they have received. I have seen the family at Safeway, but I have not heard any constituents having any concerns with that. So I think the first place to start is finding out what the prevalence is in the police department's experience and what they're doing. And then spur the conversation from that point. And we can get that scheduled for a committee of the whole.
Yeah, my, my main concern there is actually children involved. And I realize that, you know, that's some people's lifestyle. Likely all those kids have known their whole life one way or another. But that doesn't mean we need to proliferate it. It doesn't mean we need to let it happen and do all.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I did see something on Facebook. Public polls expressing concern regarding this and wanting to understand more about if there was something more going on. So I do think it is a concern of the community and I'd like to learn more. I don't, I don't know what should or could be done, but I think it's, like the mayor said, getting some information from the police department of, you know, any complaints or their observations. I think that would be helpful. I'd like to see it at a count.
Okay, so I'll just summarize. I'm kind of getting a little bit of mixed feelings, probably more in terms of like the priority of how soon this would come back or what we would. But I think that's a good starting point, like the mayor pointed out, is to, you know, start there, but because then you could fit it in with whatever workload is already going on at some point. Thank you for bringing that up. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Napland, your hand's still up, but I'm guessing since your screen's off. Okay, it's gone. Anyone else for the good of the order? Okay, then we'll move on to review of regular meeting agenda. I think the only thing besides normal stuff on the consent agenda is just those interlocal agreements with RSE for the the resource officers. So, you know, I think nothing's changed there because the last couple of years have been so bizarre and not normal. So there is, you know, no way to really, I don't know, reevaluate those at this point. So we're just continuing a status quo there. Was there anything on the agenda or on the consent specifically that people had issues with or concerned? Oh, go ahead. Councilmember Napland, it came back on. Is that?
Yeah, I am right here. Yeah, I did have a question on that item on the consent. I don't know if it's enough to take it off the consent. I just, I was a little bit surprised that it's staying at the same rate. I think it's been that rate since maybe the beginning, at least since, I think even 2016, it was that same $40,000. So it just kind of surprises me just, I mean, we're raising fees and costs and rates for all the other things in the city to our taxpayers and utility customers and yet, you know, that one fee has stayed the same for, what, eight years?
Yeah, I don't think the intentions to keep it the same forever. It was just based on the fact the last couple of years have been so not normal and they've kept it the same, but not been doing quite as much or able to do as much with COVID that it just didn't make sense to reevaluate it at this point in time. But I'm sure they will going forward.
Okay, and this contract is for just one year?
Did I hear someone say yes? Yes, thank you. I was scrolling. Yes, it is.
I just want to make sure just fairness, that, you know, we recoup costs in a fair way. And anyway, that's, I've had concerns over that, those contracts and the cost sharing for some time. So I, I hope it is looked at the next time.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, then with that, we'll move on to our first discussion item, which is an introduction to new policing staff with Chief DeBach.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff. I'm Chief DeBach, people please. As you're all aware, we've had some difficulty in hiring personnel over the last year. It's been a rough go at it. We've had some ups and downs. We did eventually get some good folks hired. They're on board here with you this evening and I'd like to introduce them and have them speak briefly to you. First up is Officer Dunkley. He was sworn in on October 11th, 2021.
All right. Hello, I'm Officer Andrew Dunkley. As Chief DeBach said, I was sworn in in October. I was hired in May of 2021 and then graduated the academy last October. I will be the school resource officer in the fall, so I'll be up at Cedar Crest High School, which I'm very excited about. I will also be teaching there, so throughout the district for the fifth graders. I just know a bit about myself. I grew up in North Bend, so pretty close. Grew up there, went to Mansay High School, went to Washington State University. Go Cubs! Where I graduated with a degree in economics and a degree in sport management. I worked in professional baseball for a while, so naturally the next step was to become a cop. And so, but I'm very, you know, excited to be here. And yeah, outside of work, you know, I live in Seattle. I have two cats. Just love to be outside. You know, I'm very, I love to travel. My family's all spread out. Everyone left Washington, I think mostly because of the cost and everything. So I have family in Cincinnati, in Europe, all over the place. So I love to travel, love to just be outside, go to Mariner games, things like that. So I'm very excited to be here in Duvall and to, you know, serve the community. So.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Next up, we have Officer Garibay. He was sworn in on February 7th of 2022.
Good afternoon. I'm Officer Garibay. I'm one of the newest officers here at the Duvall Police Department. I started my law enforcement career in 2020 at the Atmo Police Department, and that's where most of my training and experience comes from. And now most recently, I'm here at the Duvall Police Department. I'm nowhere over here because my significant other is trying to finish a nursing career and she thought of going to U-Dub, so we're still working in the process of getting her moved over here. A little bit about myself, I'm an outdoors guy, love playing sports, traveling, pretty much everything Officer Dunkley said. I also like watching sports. That's all I do pretty much in my time off is watch sports, go outside and hang out with friends. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome. Next up is Officer Head. Quick tidbit about Officer Head, he actually lives within our city, so it's exciting to have an actual person like this working.
Hi, I'm Elliot Head. Good evening, all. About myself, I graduated from Central Washington University with a degree in like social sciences and cybersecurity engineering. I started my career out in the jail, the jail. I started out in the juvenile jail up in Snoqualmie and moved my way up to a different agency. I was there for about five years before I made the jump over into law enforcement. Prior to that, I just moved in, you know, up on 285th and my neighbor was like, you should apply to Duvall. And I was like, okay. And just excited to be a part of the community, keep it safe for my new daughter. We just had a baby, my wife and I, so.
Congrats.
Next up, we have Officer Blaio. Officer Blaio was sworn in on June 28th, so he's our newest.
Well, hello. Well, I was born in Slovakia. I grew up in Chicago and then I, I was a business owner there for almost 20 years before I moved to Washington. And July of 2019, I spent two years in corrections over there in Island County. Then I did, went through the Police Academy with KSAT, county sheriffs, and then I came here to join Duvall. During my off time, I guess, hiking, camping, traveling, simple stereotypical stuff. From a cop, I guess. But no, I'm glad to be here. I enjoy it and, yeah, so it's been exciting so far.
Welcome. Thank you.
So that's our newest staff. Do you guys have any questions for them that are here? We're excited to have them. So happy they're all doing very well, as I will discuss later on tonight in our staff report. I'll give you an update of where they're at in their training process and so forth. We are still two people down. We have an opening in our first officer supervisor position and we have another officer opening as well. We do have two people in the background process currently. One is our administrative assistant anticipating her background to be done probably sometime next week. And then we have an officer, entry level officer, that's also a member of the community who used to be pastor and he's in the background process currently, so hopefully, fingers crossed, everything works out well for him. Is there any other questions?
I'm just thrilled that we're still doing Dare, so I'm, I'm just really excited that that's going on in your community.
Officer Dunkley just finished a couple of weeks ago his day at Air Trains.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. I'll go first.
Good. I'm going to sort of echo the sentiment. I mean, I think it's nice to, to one, you know, have some, some new folks. Sorry, you have to go sort of through the drill. I know it's never comfortable being up on the, on the podium, but I appreciate everyone introducing themselves. I know I've always already heard some feedback from the community just in terms of the presence, more visibility, obviously, as we're staffing up and folks are out and about. You know, that's from, you know, my daughter, who's, who's younger in high school, to, to, you know, some neighbors. So again, much appreciated and, and, you know, welcome to everyone and getting, looking forward to getting to know all of you a little more, you know, as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Napland, did you have something? Nope. Okay.
Yeah, first of all, just thanks for your service, thanks for your commitment to communicate. I think the last council member, the last council meeting we had, I asked that the word gets passed you guys. Thank you for what you do. Not just for what you do on a daily basis, but also for pulling my daughter over, brujé. She ran red line. And it was a very good experience for her. Obviously, she was nervous, but she, it was very professional. And that was the thing that she came, she was nervous about. She let me know what we should get home. She told me how great the experience was, the officer she interfaced with. So that's a great thing, as I know that you guys strive to do in, in blue period. So it's null and there, so she really appreciated it.
Good, Mayor.
Well, first of all, I have the honor of swearing in every one of you and it's been a pleasure to have you join the department. And I can tell just by meeting you at those times and your introductions tonight that and from what Councilmember Isaacson has said and we've heard from the community, that you really exemplify what our police chief is working towards in our department with that sense of community and support from our police officers. And thank you for everything that you do in our community to continue to make it better and continue to keep it safe. And also want to congratulate our police chief on his one-year anniversary within the position of police chief during a very challenging year to be able to bring so many talented, community-oriented people into the department is a huge accomplishment and congratulations and thank you all.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll just really quickly say the same thing. Welcome, everybody. Excited to have you here. Especially for Dare, I mean, and I just want to point out Sergeant Clark, my older son had Dare when it was virtual. But thank goodness it was and you still managed to make it so much fun and you really enjoyed that. So I'm excited. My younger son will get it too, coming up in a couple of years. But, um, yeah, just thanks for all that you guys do and excited to see so many new faces.
Yeah, just a quick, quick word from me. I'm just thrilled to have you guys on the, on the force. I'm part of the Public Safety Committee, so I look forward to the opportunity to work with all of you and I, and I'm sure many of the other council members will be part of the National Night Out coming up and get to maybe chat with you guys even more.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Well, that, that's a tough act to follow, guys. But we'll move on to the Duvall 2023-2024 budget process, the revenue forecast with Director Mason.
Hello, hi, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting from over here in City Hall because it's just a little bit easier. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. And hopefully everyone can see that. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. So, um, the agenda, this is, so this is just, whoops, yeah, this is just a preview of revenue estimates, just to give council an idea of how significant revenues are coming together for the 2023 budget or 2023-24 budget. The next planned discussion on revenues is that the September 20th meeting where estimates from all sources of revenues will be presented. And then the first public hearing on revenue will be October 18th. So we'll just start out with property tax. 80% of property tax, of regular property tax and property tax from the levy lid lift is received directly into the general fund. And we're anticipating, anticipating a 4% increase just based on historical increases, usually the 1%, and then about a 4% from sales tax or not sales tax, but new construction. But then you can see here, this is the, on the second slide here, I should use my little pointer. On the second slide here, these top numbers is the amount of the levy lid lift that the city receives. And then down here is the portion of the general fund sales tax or not sales tax, but property tax. So we're anticipating about 74, 71,000 more in 2021 and then 73,800 in 2024. And the rest, the property tax goes in, of the regular property tax goes into the street fund. It's 20%. And with the estimated 4% increase, that's about 13,600 and that should be 2023 and 14,100 in 2024. For sales tax, for regular sales tax, we're using about a 5.45% in 2023 and 4.1% growth in 2024. And that's just using the King County's June economic forecast. For sales tax from, for construction, we're using 6.2% and 3.3%. And that's just estimates from the engineering news. It's not report, it's news, something, construction cost index for 2022 and 2023. And then anything over that amount, that will go straight into the strategic fund. So anything over this amount right here, these ones down here, will go from sales tax from construction will be, just be received directly into the strategic fund. And this is kind of a picture of what that looks like because we just started. We moved the sales tax from construction over the ENR CCI in 2019 and 2020. We moved that over to the, the new strategic sales tax fund. And then this is our 2021 actual revenue for, for, for that fund. This is estimated for 2022. And then we just anticipated leveling out because anything over that will, will go into the general fund portion of sales tax from construction. Then we also get sales tax for the transportation benefit district. We're using the same estimates as regular sales tax, 4.5% in 2023 and 4.1% in 2024. And that's about 15,000, almost 820, 23 and about 15,000 in 2024. For utility tax, we're estimating additional 55,823 in 2023 and 61,255 in 2024. The increases is our utility tax from electricity, just about 1.55% based on historical. And then city utilities, which we'll talk a little bit, a little more in depth later. The CPIU is based on, it's, the increase in the utility tax rate is based on two-year average of the CPIU. And that number for June, the June to June just came out and it was 10.1, one of the highest I've ever seen. It may be the highest I've ever seen. And so that averages to about 7.81% in 2023. And then we're estimated on past growth about 6.48 in 2024. And then garbage, just an increase based on growth. And then the decrease we're seeing in our utility tax is TV cable, which is not surprising. And housing permits, so here's our 2020 actual housing permits, 2021 actual housing permits. And this is our estimated housing permits for 2022. Year to date through June 2022, we've received 19 housing permits, but there's a lot being not issued, but a lot being worked on right now. So, so there's going to be more this year. Just for example, 15 of the 19 that have been issued so far this year were in June. And then based on our public works director and our community development director talked to the development community and we're estimating 165 housing permits in 2023 and 175 in 2024. So that's kind of, here's the actual, the estimated for 2022 and then estimations for 2023 and 2024. For REITs, here's the actual units sold, an estimate for 2022. And we are basing the estimate of units sold in 2023 and 2024 just on historical averages. And then we're using the same rate for the forecast as the average cost in 2022, so thus far. And so impact fees, we are using the number of housing permits for the impact fees. And impact fees are increased annually by the engineering news record, that's not revert record, and the construction cost index, which will average to be 6.02 for 2023 and 4.76 for 2024. And that's just an estimate because we won't know the final numbers until December. And then the GFC charges, that's also based on the ENR CCI, so the same estimates. And we also use the permitting, housing permits to estimate the amount of revenue we'll receive here. And then here's our utility charges for services. So the revenue the city anticipates receiving, the rates increased by the average two-year CPIU, so that would be 7.81 in 2023, 6.48 in 2024. And then we also include an additional 2% for growth. So for water, that's an additional 238,000 in 2023, 226 in 2024, and that's on top of the 2023 rate. So this is the increase per year. Sewer, 288,320, 23, 273,000, almost 720, 24. And then for storm, just over 90,000 in 2023 and 85,6 in 2024. So I kind of cruised right through that. Does anybody have any questions or would you like to talk about any of the slides?
Any questions, anyone? Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I, I actually have, oh. I have a question, somewhat comment regarding the utility rate increases. And I brought this up up when we were a comp plan and water comp plan, in that when you looked at the financial analysis for those plans, we were going to be building up a very sizable surplus of funds quite rapidly, especially considering the money coming in from growth. And the money that comes in from revenue is two parts. Part of it is paying for additional capacity that might need to occur. And the other half, well, it's not exactly half, but the other portion is to repay the ratepayers, the existing customers who have been paying for the system, have built the system. And now the new customers are buying in. So as new homes are built, they all buy into the system and repay the ratepayers who have been, you know, maintaining and building the system as to get it to where it is. And so for me, I, I felt uncomfortable with this autopilot of increasing the utility rates every year without regard to what of increasing the utility rates every year without regard to what revenue do we need? We're building an economy of scale by adding all of these new residents. You know, I just think we need to look at this more closely before we pass on a 10% increase. And I'll just give a short summary. I found this, it's from when I moved in, in 2000, and my sewer portion of the bill was $35. And now it is almost $82. That's a 132% increase since I moved here. And if I look at inflation, for that same period, it's only 57%. So the increase is double inflation, since I have moved here, just for the sewer portion, as an example. And part of that increase, I recall when it happened, was they were expanding the sewer plant for future growth. And what was told to the community is, yes, this is a lot, this is a big increase. But as soon as the new residents come in, your rate will come back down, because more people will come, they will pay into the system, all of this stuff. But in the meantime, that hasn't happened, more customers come, we're still getting this automatic increase plus each year. And all of this general facility charge money is coming in, and we're building up huge surpluses. We have such a huge surplus in our rate-paying fund, which is the money coming in from people paying their monthly bills. We had such a huge surplus that we are basically paying cash for this latest sewer expansion, paid for by ratepayers. And all of the bills for our loan have been paid for by the ratepayers, the loan we took out to build the capacity for the last expansion. Anyway, I feel very strongly about this, and I brought it up when we talked about the sewer and water comp plan, when we looked at the financial analysis. And I looked at it pretty deeply, and I don't see that it is financially necessary to increase these rates according to inflation. I think that we have large surpluses, and it's not justified. And, you know, at the time of COVID, everyone's being hit by costs increases just in everything. And I think the least we could do with, to be, take a closer look at what do we need, and base our rates on what we need, not on some arbitrary, let's just increase it by inflation every year. So what I'm asking is, maybe part of the budget process, maybe as part of a separate agenda item, if we could look a little bit closer before we just autopilot add on these huge increases to our utility rate. So I'm asking for support, if possible, from the rest of council to be willing to look a little bit closer at that before we, you know, hit our fellow residents with this large of an increase.
Yeah, thank you. I think before, I don't know if Director Mason, or maybe even Director Lenashewski want to comment on that, but just to pivot on that, because like, some of what I'm hearing Councilmember Napland say, the messaging piece to the public, I guess, would be, you know, if something was messaged out to the community, but then down the road, maybe something changes, or, you know, kind of going down, I don't know, a different strategy or something to follow up and update everyone, or, I don't know, because I wasn't here in Duvall when that happened. But the second thing, I guess for me personally, based off of what Councilmember Napland's saying is, well, you know, from staff, I'd like to understand what are the pros and cons of a constant steady increase versus like reevaluating each time, and then, you know, making it very specific to what's going on. I just want to understand if there's a strategy there, or a, you know, a big pro to one way or over the other. Yeah, go ahead, Director Mason.
Thanks. Well, I can just start off with this, and then maybe Steve can join in. But we're already starting our budget process and talking to vendors about expenditures and how our costs are going to go up. I mean, a lot of cities use the CPIU as their increase, annual increase for salaries for employees. We don't. Currently, we use the Teamsters rolling, or at least for represented employees, it's a rolling 10-year CPIU, which really smooth things out. But some cities, I'm getting these emails from other finance directors saying, how can we do this? And then we talk to vendors, and we say, how much more is this going up next year? And everybody is increasing their prices. So it's, yes, we may receive more revenue, but our expenditures are going to go up quite a bit during this biennium. So just something to consider. I mean, we can, we could put all the expenditures in and just see where we're at. And but it's, 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 the expenditures are going up, for sure.
Director Lenashewski, not to put you on the spot, well, I'll go ahead and do that, if you have anything to add, or seems like this is in your lane a bit.
Sure. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Staff and Citizen, Steve Lenashewski, Pub Works. So I would say, yes, my punishment is certainly being put on the spot, since I'm not I think a couple of points to note is, it's always harder to catch up and stay ahead. Step one. Step two, we're really early in the process, so like, Finance Director Mason said, hey, if we go through, nothing says today we have to get that resolution passed to, you know, have the CPI, you know, assessed as normally processed. So we have time. We are all, again, fearful of the economy as far as inflation. Yes, we, you know, just today, we got an increased notice from one of our providers for water system supply parts. So there's, there is actual things happening. As Councilmember Napland pointed out, right, we're hoping to build a plan for surplus. We do have long-term projects coming in the 20-year cycle. We do hope to pay for them with cash. That is a strategy that we've employed. You can always borrow, but that's not necessarily something the city has done. So like, those things are not immediate, but, you know, intermediate and longer-term strategies. Certainly, we can change our policies and look to borrow to kind of flatten out some of those peaks. But again, the surpluses are all proposed based on projected, you know, budgets over time, right? Dana can tell you probably pretty close to the $100,000, what we have in the, in the systems right now for sewer, water, or store, but certainly not a large surplus at this time. But again, long-range forecast and planning, we hope to build that to do, you know, other work. So never an easy call. The good news is, none of us have had to deal with this in a 20-year career, because it's, it's a big one, right, like Dana said, so. I hope that helps a little. I think we have time is the buffer, though.
I just want to check with Councilmember Isaacson super quick. You started to raise your hand, I think, or did you change your mind?
I did. I just wanted to listen to Steve first. I mean, I think we should all be concerned about, anyone who recognizes, it's just numbers. It seems like if Jennifer's history is correct, I have no reason not to believe if the citizens were told we're going to put a fee on you to pay for an expansion, and you're going to get your money back, or you're racing to get back, whatever it is, then I would like to propose that we kind of hold ourselves accountable for answering that question as to why it's not going to happen with this next budget, or at least have a plan, place to say how we're going to refund some money to those people who invested in that system. I don't like anything, it's like, well, trust me, it'll happen in the future. When it doesn't happen, let's say why, so we communicate it to the city and ourselves, for that matter.
Did you have something there?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there is mention of massive surpluses. And part of the reason we have surpluses is because we have been receiving record revenue. However, there are many staffing positions and other important projects that the city needs to move forward that have not yet been approved by council that would reduce those surpluses. Our contingency and our savings are all full, that is true. But we also know inflation is at over 10%. We know that the salary schedule that was just approved is already out of date, based on current market conditions. And while gas prices are going down and inflation seems to be easing, there is no indication that prices are going to go back to where they were six months or even a year ago. And so I think there's, there's many, several separate issues here that are getting combined into one. And we need to look at each at their face and understand what their impact is on the city, on our community, and on the budget. I will say that the information that the city had when I moved into the city 21 years ago was much less sophisticated than what we have now. When that sewer plan was developed, we didn't have the technology or the forecasting tools that we have today. We didn't know how long it was going to take for our growth targets to start to be met. The reality is, is that the money that has been spent has been money that has been necessary to maintain our facilities. And especially when you're dealing with sewer and water, that is a public health and safety issue. So we have to be very, very careful about relying on loans or grants to be funding improvements for those types of things, because if we are not doing proper planning to fund the operations and maintenance of that, we can end up in an emergency situation, just like the city was 21 years ago, and then have to do a massive assessment on folks. The approach that the city has taken over the last 20 years is incremental, and trying to plan for the future, looking ahead with our 20-year capital facilities plans and planning as appropriately as possible. So to Director Lenashewski's point, we're going to have peaks and valleys. But the goal is to have a steady line, so that we can fund our infrastructure as required by law and as our taxpayers expect. And it's not always going to be what we want to pay. And I want to also acknowledge that every single one of us in this room is a taxpayer. And as a taxpayer, especially as the mayor, and seeing what's gone on over the last 20-plus years, I believe we have the strongest financial planning for our capital facilities that we have ever had. In fact, I believe we're doing a lot better than most other cities. So I do support going a deep dive. We do this every single budget cycle on this topic. So this is kind of a recurring cycle. But it's also important for a refresher and for our newer members to understand the process better. So I just wanted to share that with the group as well, is that you might have surplus, but there's a lot of stuff that's not getting done right now, because we don't have the staff to do it.
There are councilmembers? Good. Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I applaud Councilmember Napland's concern regarding the people that have lived here for longer periods and have actually financed a large, you know, a large part of this. One of the things I think we should consider is maybe a break. Maybe it's just a one-year break or whatever, but instead of increasing it this year, let's leave it, leave it flat. Now, I'm not saying we should do that, but I would like to consider that and understand the implications of doing that. I realize, you know, 1% would be a very small break to our, to our taxpayers, but every little bit helps. And people are struggling right now, specifically because of inflation, and, you know, still recovering from COVID. I personally think that would be a reasonable thing for the council to do. And I, Councilmember Napland, I did want to double-check with you, was that what you were thinking? Maybe, or did you have other thoughts in mind?
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a good question. I may have not been clear. What I'm asking for is not necessarily that we would lower utility rates, is that there could be a moderation of the increase that we would apply, perhaps give a break. Let's look at the numbers and see if we can do it. I agree, I'd rather have a steady increase each year than, you know, try to constantly, oh no, we had a big increase, and have the rates go all over the place every year. I think that's very difficult for customers. But what I'm seeing is that we do have a large surplus. We had such a large surplus of ratepayer revenue that we transferred, I think it was $3 million to pay for this sewer expansion. So that, in addition to the fact that we're paying on loans from the last sewer expansion that's coming out of ratepayers. So we could be using GFC money that's coming in from these new customers to pay for those things. Anyway, I just think that, for me, I would like a moderation, perhaps a one-year break, and have an ability to message to the community, we're having a ton of growth. The growth is bringing in funds to help pay for this system. I think it would be some great messaging, and I don't think that it would financially, at all. And I think we should explore that as a possibility. So that's where I stand.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer.
And I'm going to sort of split the difference a little bit, is I'm not comfortable either, even making a recommendation at this point, and you're pushing for a stay or cut that, because I think, I think there's a lot more sort of questions. My, one of my expectations is, we move forward in this process, and I think as Director Lenashewski indicated, that there will be an opportunity, that deeper dive, just as part of the, the process we go through every year. I think the broader conversation, and I do find it interesting, because, you know, having different stages, we have different conversations, the need to, forward-thinking and strategic planning versus sort of doing things in the now. The need for, you know, has just, has been demonstrated even with some of the recent cost increases, the unknown economic climate in terms of what that drives. And even in the case of loans, you know, that's also driving increase in loan rates, so the cost of borrowing is also important. But I do think that broader needs analysis, both in terms of what we need, what we plan for, because I think where I don't want us to be is whether it's in the Park Tenokan space, when we're, you know, we're not able to do things because we don't have the funds. I don't know that, I think Director Mason probably has this, in terms of the, the full articulation of, as the mayor indicated, both projects that are in the playing now, things that we want to do in the future, where those all fit. Because as a rate, you know, holder, I wouldn't necessarily want us to hold. It's basically, I think, for me, the question is, is it the right mix of covering costs today and additional surplus? And I think that's the conversation, have what that number should be, not necessarily whether we, we pause or not pause. Because I do think we're going to continue to grow, there's some things that are constant. I don't, you know, in the current climate, I have not seen a lot of rollback, and a lot of this doesn't seem to be driven by supply and demand, it's driven by, whether it's just opportunity. We're also transitioning in terms of the energy economy and what we use, and there's a lot of unknowns around costs, and what we're going to, even in the matter of, you know, what water's going to cost if there's less supply. I mean, look at, look at the California/Colorado issue, you know, there's a lot of unknowns in that space that they're being asked to do. So I'm of the opinion that I think we should have that conversation. And part of that is just, what do we need to know, what do we need to understand, and then potentially talk about adjusting whatever that index is. But maybe it's not the CPI, maybe it's something a little bit less. But I'm a little hesitant to even communicate it back as a break or as this, because I do think it sets expectations, and we're always, puts us in a place when we have been other requests for other items that we want. We need to really be clear in terms of what, what the community needs, where we want to make investments. And then that's really where our messaging should be around, not necessarily that we're, we're cutting rates per se, but here, how we're reallocating funds, or here's what we have as our strategic priorities.
Thank you. Councilmember Hope, did you have anything to add?
I, so I, hearing what Jennifer, Councilmember Napland, has said, I have been feeling this as well for a long time, so I really want to look at, I think we need to look at the numbers. It just feels, it does feel like it's an excessive amount that we've, we have in a reserve almost to say. You know, it's like, it, it feels like there's been, that what we've been charging has been more than what we, you know, should have over the years. When I moved here from Boffel, my utility bill went, it doubled. And I thought I had a water leak. So I went and dug through my yard, trying to figure out where the leak was coming from, because I was shocked at what we were, what our water bill was. So I guess my, my point to that is that it just feels like it's, we need to look at these numbers. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm glad Councilmember Napland brought it up.
So it sounds like to me, there's a consensus to take a deeper dive into this. We're not sure where that's going to go yet, but just to at least look at it, to consider more. Director Mason, or does that answer, or do you have, is that enough for you to?
Yeah, I mean, the whole point of this was just to give council a heads-up, so you didn't find out in October, you know, that, that there's been a pretty significant increase in the inflators that we use for our, our rates. So I think it definitely served its purpose, and there's lots of room for discussion in the future. So we'll, we'll get the expenditures in, and then we'll see what it looks like, and present that to you. We can move from there.
That sounds perfect. Thank you. So just to keep us on schedule here, then we're going to move on to the property tax calculation correction, again with Director Mason.
This is another fun one. Let me share my screen. So can everyone see it? Okay. In November of 2016, voters approved Proposition 1. And Proposition 1 increased the city's regular property tax levy by up to, this is directly from the proposition, 0.325 of every 1,000th of assessed value to a total maximum rate of $1.75 per $1,000 of assessed value. It was, it's a nine-year levy lift that started in 2017 and ends in 2025. And it pays for Big Rock Ballfield Turf and Lighting Project debt, a full-time school resource officer, and then it also pays for IT infrastructure improvements. And then here's, you already saw a screen with this, but here's our, our levy lift revenue that comes in right now currently, as it stands. So the issue is, the city received a letter in April from the, the King County Assessor's Office saying that there was a miscalculation in the levy lift. So to calculate the levy lift, instead of using the, the 0.35 of every $1,000 of assessed value, the county used, we, the county should have used the maximum rate of $1.75 per 1,000 of assessed value. So if the correct rate had been used, the city would have received approximately 63,300 more per, per year. And that would have been available for IT infrastructure improvements since the Big Rock debt is already taken care of and the school resource officer is already taken care of. And since the error wasn't caught until April of 2022, only the difference between the allowable levy and the amount that the city requested for the last few years can be re-levied. So every year, the, the city, the, the assessor's office says, you can levy this amount. And the city adds about $20,000. One year it was just $10,000, but we add a little extra for, for additional things that may come in before the property taxes is finalized. And sometimes it's $5,000 more we get, sometimes it's $2,000, but it's usually not enough, I mean, not a huge amount. So only the difference between the allowable levy and the amount we requested for the last three years can be re-levied. And that's a total of $47,690. So here is the question. Is, and, and I'd like to preface this with saying, this is just for discussion. If council, when we make a decision, it would, it would have to be at the next council meeting. And then for the second question, that would be when the council decides, when we do the property tax levy ordinance, which is, is, is further down the road. The first question is, is council interested in re-levying the amount that was under-levered the past three years, the $40,690? And if so, should it be re-levied over two years or three years? So right here, and also in your agenda packets, the cost would be, over two years, it would be about $11,000 or $11.02 for a home that has an assessed value of $850,000. And over three years, it would be $7.34 per year for a home that has an assessed value. And then moving forward, the question is, is council interested in levying the allowable levy, which would bring in that extra 60, almost 64,000 more in revenue in 2023 for use on information and technology? And in your packet is a bunch of items that the city would love to use on, on information technology. And if council decided to, you know, moving forward with the allowable levy, it would cost a property taxpayer with a home that has an assessed value approximately $29.56 more per year. And then current, the current levy lift costs the same property owner $191 per year. And so that is the end of my slideshow. Just want to, just open it up for discussion. And like I said, and can't actually make a decision until the next council meeting. So, or council, we would just do a vote, no ordinance or anything like that. And then I would let the assessor's office know what we would want to do about, the city wants to do about the first part, the re-levy. And then when we do our property tax ordinance, the, we, we would just simply, if council wanted to move forward with the increase in levy, we would do that. If not, we just wouldn't, we would ask for less money than our allowable levy. So are there any questions?
Councilmember Isaacson?
I think you may have asked my question in there, following, and when I read through this before. So summary for me, and being new to the council, but someone with a simple mind from Louisiana, when I read this, what I hear is we could have levied more than we did. And the state, or King County has come and told us, you could have levied more, but we didn't. But we, as a city, are not in trouble for not doing that, right?
No, no, it was the county's, the county's miscalculation.
So we don't owe the-
They did it on it and figured out they had done it wrong.
We don't owe the county anything. And what we're saying is, the taxpayer, or the property taxpayers who paid, have paid less than they could have. Why would we go back and ask for more money is what I'm throwing out there. Why don't we just leave it as it is? And I think that's what you said at the end, is we could just let it go. To me, we're talking about having surplus of money and things like that. And I mean, I don't know why would you go back? Why don't we just learn from our mistakes and move forward? Instead of saying, well, I could have got more money from you residents. We're going to go back and get it from you now. I think that's probably a slap in the face personally.
Councilmember, did you have your hand up?
I did.
And then we'll go Shaffer to you.
I, I just sort of two, two points of clarification. I mean, I think one is, and I think you said this, Director Mason, but just to clarify is, the error was made, it was on the, on the, the King County, not necessarily the city. That does, you know, make it a little harder to digest that. They also, they're cap the ability to correct, even though, you know, that there's sort of, you get it both sides, you, you realize you had an opportunity to take in another 63,000, but based on the law, it's capped because of when it was, was found. I do, was sort of curious about the, or just wanted to add a little bit to, to, Councilmember Isaacson's comment. I mean, there's, there's obviously two ways you could, could read this. The expectation of the, of the property owner that they approved proactively was for a higher amount. We built them less. You know, when the bank makes a mistake, they don't, let you keep the money, they rebill you and, and sort of take that back. I just would understand in terms of the flexibility, if in fact, in, in any way, this hampers it. I think this was specifically targeted for some IT investments that would be beneficial potentially to the city. So there's an opportunity cost by not taking that in. And, and I think the, the, the matter of 11 versus seven, that seems to me to fairly negligible. I mean, that's a smaller amount than obviously the second piece, where there is a bigger lift on the, on the property tax. And so my question to you on that one was, was there a tangible benefit by, by three years versus two years, other than the fact that we were charging, you know, $4 less per year over that three-year period versus two-year period?
Yes, it would just be a, a smaller hit on property tax owner. And I also wanted to, so if we took that re-levied amount, we distributed it, we asked, distributed it over three years, if people would just pay a little bit less for those three years. Does that, and I also wanted to point out and apologize. I sent out an email earlier this afternoon. And the FAC had asked me to send out the documents that were sent to the community. And I had not done that. I thought, I was like, oh, the proposition has all that information. But they really wanted you to see what was presented to the community at that time, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shaffer?
Yes, first of all, I agree with Councilmember Isaacson. I'm really not interested in going back and retroactively collecting taxes. I think that gives a very poor message to our, to our taxpayers, our property taxpayers. Let's see, question, Director. This, the, the, the collection process with this, this would just be assessed in future property tax payments. Is that correct?
Yes, so it would be added on to, like, if we re-levied for '23, '24, and '25, it would just be added on to the total property tax amount that the city puts on its ordinance. And then we would, it would be distributed by assessed value.
Right, okay, okay, good, good. As far as going forward in the future with the full levy amount, I am in favor of that. The reason being, I don't want to set a precedent that somehow do always discounting our, you know, our allowable property tax. I think that would be a mistake for us. So, so yay, yay for one, and nay for the other.
Councilmember Napland? You're muted.
I think it's really important for council to understand what was discussed at our committee meeting. And there's some really important, relevant information about what was communicated to the community and what was in the original resolution approved by council regarding how much would be levied. And I want to read you really quick. This is on the resolution of what council believed they were approving and what they did approve. A proposition to authorize a levy of $316,546,000 per annum upon all taxable property within the city for collection for nine years, beginning in 2017. The estimated cost to be approximately .325 per thousand of assessed value for a total rate not to exceed $1.75 per thousand of assessed value. So the way I read that, and the way I think the council and the community understood it, is that the 1.75 was kind of a cap, but it wasn't that you were going to collect $1.75. It was that you, you took the dollar amount you were planning to collect, and you don't know what your assessed value is going to be ahead of time. So you don't know what the rate's going to be, because the rate is just a function of the dollar amount you need to collect, divided by the assessed value, and you get a rate. So you don't know about it ahead of time. But what they're telling you ahead of time is it will not exceed $1.75. The worst-case scenario, all of our home values drop to almost nothing. We have another housing recession. You would never pay more than $1.75 per thousand. That's what it says. Okay, so I also want to share what was in the marketing materials. And that's what was in, sent later. And this was a discussion we had at the FAC committee. And the request was to review the information and decide, how does the marketing material align with what we're now trying to do? Because the marketing material describes it as a nine-year, $330,000 annual investment. And so at this point, if we add on the $65,000 annual amount that they're saying we under-levered, we'd be collecting $478,000. So the community was told 330, and now we're going to be collecting $478,000 per year, and it's just going to go up from there. And actually, it's more than that, because that's what it would have been in 2002, so 2023, it's even more. I, and, and to add more confusion and layers to what's going on here is, I know another fellow council member had this conversation with the then-city administrator. I also had a similar conversation. What was described to me is that this levy was more functioning like a bond. And I was told that as more residents moved to the city, my share of that $330,000 would go down. And instead, unfortunately, the, you know, there was some misunderstanding on the city of how it was explained to people, is that it doesn't function like a bond. It's not a set dollar amount. It does grow by the 1% and new construction. So that, you know, there's multiple layers of confusion. But the bottom line is, there is no way I would feel comfortable bumping up the collection to $475, $500,000 a year, when every bit of marketing material talks about either the $318,000 or the $330,000. I just, it, I, I would actually like legal to look at the language that was in the resolution. And even if the technicality of what King County Assessor says they, we could collect based on what they might typically do, it's not the intention of what council had, had intended at the time. It's not what is even written in the wording of the resolution. And it's not what was explained to the community. So I, I just don't feel good about it. And I, I think that is the most important decision here, is, do we collect what we think King County says we can legally collect? Or do we look back at what we told the community and the language of what was in the resolution and in the marketing materials?
Thank you. I'll just jump in unless, are you good? Or, okay. Yeah, I, I think for me, the hard part about this is that, that IT component was the main thing, I think, that, you know, fell off and didn't really get funded. And that was, you know, this was before I was on council, and I actually had conversations with the former city administrator. And I really struggled with it because there was no detail. And like, it was like this three-tiered approach. I'm looking at it right now, and I'm just remembering, I had email and phone conversations, because there was, you know, on the lovely discussion board, right? You would see a lot of people talking. I'm like, are these people emailing the city and asking these? So I kind of like helped put together some questions and asked. And they're just, you know, so I'm looking at this, and how many years ago this was, and what, what did, what was our intent with that IT portion? So I'm just not, if we don't have a real solid plan for what we would use that for, I'm totally uncomfortable trying to recoup what we could have collected. You know, and I just all around agree with everything everybody's pretty much said. So I just, if we don't have a very specific plan, because of course, we could always spend whatever money we have, right? But I just feel like this is not a good moment to do that with this particular item. Good, Councilmember Isaacson?
Yeah, expanding on what I kicked off my statement with, Councilmember Shaffer said he'd be willing to move it up one forward. Wouldn't make clear, I'm not willing to move it up one forward. I'd like to know is, what, what was voted on, what was proposed to the public? And what was, we budgeted that money for something that gave us a dollar value? If we try and go back, I'd also ask a question, what house value are we going to tax? Is it today's value or is it 17's value? Because if you go at the $1.75 per thousand today, that's a lot more money than the $1.75 in 2017. And if I was a citizen and you come back and told me that, I would probably go get lawyers.
Dana can answer.
You know, so I'm just, I, I'm very hesitant to say, what was the budget that we planned on getting out of this? And then going back, because King County said you could have. I was, Councilmember Napland, I think that's going to be a hard bill of goods to sell to our citizens. If I was, you know, caught in the street, I would say I completely disagree with it, to every citizen I spoke with.
Yeah, I want to be a little sensitive to time here, because we have a couple other things to discuss. But I want to first check with Councilmember Hope, because she hasn't spoken yet. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm going to bring it up with you and Councilmember Napland, so that's, that's it.
It sounds, okay, it sounds like there's a lot of agreement, maybe a few differences in like what, you know, those two components. Councilmember Napland, did you have anything brief to add? Or, or did you not mean to have your hand up still?
Oh, I didn't mean to, but yeah, I'm just in opposition to any attempt to collect more money, either recouping or moving forward at a higher amount. I, I, if you look at the dollar amounts in the marketing materials, we have already collected so much more, even at the rate we're collecting at now. We've collected so much more than we had anticipated or told the community. And so then to even go from there, I just know on all parts of it.
Okay, Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'm, for, when we bring this up again, I would like to know from council, because we're hearing money, money, money. When you look at the budget and what services we're receiving and what it's costing to maintain the park and fund our IT systems, I think a fundamental question we also need to ask is, is this taxpayer money being used appropriately and wisely? And is it funding our basic services? So that is a huge fundamental factor here, is that we promised, one of the things, while calculations or language may have been off, I guarantee beyond a shadow of doubt, it was reviewed by multiple legal sources before it was on the ballot. It had to be, it had to be reviewed by King County Elections. They had to review it and approve it. So there was significant review. And in fact, even ballot, language for the informational materials were fully reviewed by legal. So I do want to put that out in the air and clear it. There was division amongst council when we put this on the ballot. But I think the fundamental thing, we're, we're talking about money here, but we also need to focus on what services are our citizens getting? And if you don't collect the money as it was legally allowed, what are you not going to be able to do? And what money, where are you going to get the money to fund those IT services? We will probably be talking later today, but we are going to have to make a big, huge shift in our IT services, and it's likely going to cost us a significant amount more in the coming years. We knew this was coming over time. However, it's happening at a different pace than we wanted. So when we have these conversations, I would like to really encourage folks to- So when we have these conversations, I would like to really encourage folks to dig deeper and ask what services are the citizens getting for this money that we're spending? And if you can come to us and show to us where you think the money is being wasted, then we want to take a look at it. And or where you don't think we should be providing the service to our employees or our community. Because that's just as important in this conversation as the dollars and cents that are being spent. So I just wanted to share that and kind of bring folks back to what our job is here. It's not just managing a budget, it's providing service to the community.
So I just want to check because I want to make sure Director Mason has what she needs. Um, because I'm not a hundred percent sure where we're at with. Um, I, it sounds like loud and clear, no one wants to re-levee to, you know, recoup that. But I wasn't totally clear, I heard a couple clear answers about going forward that amount. So Director Mason, do you want to phrase any question to us just to make sure you get what you need?
No, no decision is made here. Uh, this needed here at this meeting, we'll bring it back to Cal and you could just do a simple yay and nay. There's no resolution ordinance or anything like that. So we'll just get to the next council meeting. And then when we do our property tax ordinance, we'll bring this up one more time. Say yay or nay, well, not yay or nay, you can say, no, we don't want it and yeah, move on from there.
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Isaacson.
But you know, in, not in, in debating fashion with the mayor, but to, to understand. We all understand that as time goes by, things change and prices change. But if what I recall in voting, and I was actually a citizen when this came up and I disagreed with the levy tax period. Um, I remember having conversations with council members here about it that day. I couldn't ask a question, it says, like, you just make, or you guys couldn't answer me. You know, ask a question, which can answer me. My point is, if, if the general citizen looks at and says, this is how much money we said we're going to. And then you or the council has come back and says, yeah, well, this is how much we told you, but we could get this much and we need it and we can justify it. To me, that is, we are not doing what we're supposed to as city, uh, the elected representatives, we're not holding ourselves accountable for the money we serve. But and we have an, an escape goal to go out and get more money from you. To me, the, the above board approaches, we come back to our citizens and say, we told you we need this much money, it's costing more. Put another, you know, proposition on the ballot and let's vote for more money. Let's vote for saying we want to move this up to a dollar seventy-five, not the point three two five that we said was going to give us this quantity.
Great, and to be clear, I'm not getting into your decisions on which way to go with going backwards or going forwards. I'm just asking that when you're having these conversations, that this is another thing that's at the forefront. Um, because every decision we make with money impacts the ability to provide services to our community. Um, including core services and IT is a core service and core function of government. Um, so it's not, you know, I say that in not a asking you guys go one way or another. Because, you know, there's, there's clearly, you know, we all know there were some mistakes in how things have been done in the past twenty years. And we've been doing them very, very differently the last five years. Um, in a much more transparent, much more accurate way. It's one of the reasons we've invested in new software, um, and other items, um, and other plans to be more transparent. Um, and be more clear. We absolutely can and should communicate if council chooses to go forward with any other changes. So, for example, if council chooses to go forward with accepting, um, more as per the actual language and law, then absolutely the city would need to communicate that. All I'm saying is that in all of these discussions, we, we really need to focus on what our job is as far as services as well and communicating that, because that's what's getting lost in this conversation. Um, if we don't appropriately levy on the ball fields, we don't have money to fund and operate and replace the turf on a very expensive ball field. And the money has to come from elsewhere. Um, most taxpayers believe they are paying for the field and paying for tech. Sometimes counties and cities make mistakes, we can figure out how to work that out. Uh, but we also need to be very cognizant of the impact and also how we talk about it. Because yes, the city, if people made mistakes in the past, acknowledge it. Tell them how we're fixing it and tell them what services are getting it and show them how their money was not wasted. Um, because the impression when you just talk about money and cutting is that there's waste. And I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt, if you look at our spending in the city, um, there is very little discretionary budget. Almost every single penny is put to use with necessary staffing and necessary supplies. Um, being that we don't even have a city hall to have a, a meeting in speaks volumes to how far behind we are as a city. Um, and the need to move forward and we've been playing catch-up for the last five years. Um, to get, make up for the lack of planning and lack of funding over the last twenty-five. Um, and so just that's, you know, I'm sorry, I went too long. I'm like starting. Leave it that, but I'm also happy to have conversations with anybody offline, um, to provide more history and context and give suggestions on things that need to be evaluated just as strongly as the finances.
So it sounds like, uh, Director Mason did not need any direction from us right now, it's just discussion. And I think it was a really good discussion. Um, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move on so we don't run out of time here to expenditure of ARPA funding with Director Lenishevsky.
Hello again. This should be short and sweet. We did have a committee meeting last week. I will share my screen and try not to stare too far to one side. I even turned off teams and it's still thinking slowly, okay. Come on. Oh, boy. Yeah, it's all in the way, of course. Almost there, I promise. Okay. Uh, a couple items we have somewhat remaining to dig into, everybody see the screen?
Uh, yes.
ARPA thoughts? Okay, um, so we, we've talked about a kind of a sodden streetscape, uh, discussion. We've also talked about some signal operations. Uh, the newest element not added to this was even just a, a more simpler beautification, flower pots, uh, planter, planter pots along the Main Street downtown corridor, so. With that said, the only new number to report, uh, was the Wash Dot Signal and Operations. So we, we reached out to our on-call consultant transport group, um, under, you know, any specific task order, we could issue this. But they were asked by me to look at the intersection as it exists today and see what we may or may not be able to do and work with Wash Dot on making some changes, uh, to kind of the operations at hand. We're in a little bit of a, a limbo just because Wash Dot themselves are, are going through a process to redesign the signals in town and get them interconnected, uh, with fibers so that they can be, uh, smart signals as well as upgrade all the controllers on those signals downtown. So probably a little premature and if Wash Dot can't share the exact specifications that they're going to build, you know, we might be, you know, a little, a couple months ahead of schedule, which is nice to be for once. Um, but with that said, we, we did look to see if they could assess the signals. Um, you can kind of see the notes there under the tasks. Uh, basically, look at alternatives, including lane configurations, signal phasing, traffic routing, um, movement allowances, i.e. can you go left or can you not go left? So that's kind of where we, we look at maybe doing some work. Because one of the higher priorities out of the council was kind of the, the traffic signal, not only operationally today, but you know, permanently in the future. So this was a step in that direction. And then we are still cranking away on the facade and streetscape, uh, kind of approach for the downtown corridor. So that's really all I have is an update on ARPA, not exciting. Time is ticking. We will talk about it again at the next committee meeting, so.
I had a quick question, Director Lenishevsky. There were a couple, it's been a few meetings, but I thought there were a couple other items that we were going to get more information on, like speakers on Main Street or something. Is that all still in the works to come back to us at some point? Because I'm pretty sure we didn't approve that or maybe I'm misremembering.
Yeah, I don't believe anything has further been approved and we do have information on that. We did talk at the last committee meeting about maybe expanding the reach of that length. I think it was bringing it up in, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick or Ron, you were there. But, uh, along the lines of Richardson, kind of over by, uh, the hardware store and up that little corridor off of Main. And then at least to Virginia, if not the block north of Virginia, but yeah. So we do have costs for a basic set. Um, so yeah, I think we'll, we should be able to finalize those numbers. Uh, I think the facade program, it's still, there's not a lot of the great comparables out there. So these are the kind of, uh, five little precursors, I guess I should reshare that, that we were, we were considering on the facade kind of treatment project itself. Like they would have to have some kind of match, they would have to have some kind of time to complete. They, we would request that they had some kind of number of bids. There'd be some kind of group to approve, obviously, what they were doing relative to the expenditure of the bids. Maybe we would use our on-call design consultant, uh, architect for that. Um, so that was kind of those points we, we bulleted out some basic points to make a reasonable but yet, um, proofed out kind of process.
Any questions from council? Good, uh, Councilmember Schaefer?
Just to add what Steve was talking about, uh, we did talk about what, you know, perhaps could be done in the near term now. Near term with all the, uh, you know, all logistics issues and labor chores right now, probably doesn't bring this in our, unfortunately. But, but we need to add very soon, I think we want to have it in place, you know, by, you know, by next year. Uh, specifically, you know, simple things, uh, as far as, uh, uh, streetscape improvements. Uh, would be, you know, could be, uh, additional flowers along, along Main, Main Street. Just now I was in Leavenworth a few days ago and they have excellent flower displays up and down the street. Obviously professionally maintained because they all look really good. Uh, I think we, uh, should consider something similar, again, using a, uh, you know, a sort of, some kind of service that would, would maintain those, you know, install them and maintain them. Uh, and not, you know, for the other, you know, city staff or city staff, uh, for that. And besides that, you know, we need somebody that really has, uh, experience in that area. The speak, the, the speakers, uh, up and down Main Street were, you know, another thing that, uh, you know, obviously not, not near term, but something that we could have in place, uh, by next summer. Uh, and I think that would be a big, uh, you know, big plus for our historic downtown area. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce has already requested something along those lines that we, uh, we support. Uh, so most if not all the downtown businesses, uh, do, uh, do support that. I think that would be a very nice, uh, feature for us to have here in town. And something that would help differentiate Duval from, you know, from others, other, other places. Give a more welcoming feel to visitors to our town.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I just, I would just really like, um, more information on what was presented today. It's kind of hard to digest, um, without, um, you know, being able to review it ahead of time. But I, I still, I still question the speakers, I know I've said this before. I, I really would like to speak to some of the businesses on Main Street to make sure that they would appreciate that. Um, you know, there's quite a few, uh, businesses that have their own live music. And even on their outdoor patios and different things like that. And I, it, it just seems like it could create conflicts and, and what music or I don't know, it just seems like a, a significant expense and maintenance and for a, for a small reward personally. But, um, yeah, I, I'd like more looking into that to make sure that the businesses along Main Street, that, that music would intrude into their business interiors. And I, I think that before we do something like that, we should really, um, maybe have a more robust, um, effort to get feedback.
Yeah, and I, I can, I can do that, uh, Jennifer, the, the Chamber did send out an email to us, um, month, month ago, six weeks ago, related to that. Uh, I did not follow up on that, uh, however, and I guess I really, really don't even, uh, since I wasn't able to make the last, uh, one or two chamber meetings because this meeting actually conflicted with them. Uh, I'm not sure of the background on it, so let me, let me dig into that. Uh, see, you know, really where that request originated from. Try to determine if it really does have the support of most of the, uh, most of the businesses. And at the same time, I'd like to get, you know, get feedback on, uh, this idea of some simple streetscape improvements like, you know, like flowers, because, you know, maybe, I, you know, I think it's a good idea, but maybe, maybe some of the businesses don't. So let me, let me, let me pursue that.
All right, so we're short on time here. Um, Director Thomas, do you want to go for it? Or we could maybe move it to the administrative update, I'm not sure, what do you want to do?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council Laura Thomas, for the record. I think we should probably push it because we have less than five minutes before the next meeting starts. So I can do it under administrative report, thank you.
Awesome, okay, so we're going to move, everyone's losing their name flag. We're, we're going to move the employee recruitment incentives, um, to our council meeting. So then just to know, you know, there's a couple reports on here that you guys can peruse, um, when you have time. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at six fifty-five. Uh, thanks, everyone. You'd like it, but no, just kidding, it's fine.
Thank you, Sarah.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was just gonna ask everybody that's in a Zoom meeting if they could just label themselves of who they are so that, um, members of the community know.
She wants everyone to label themselves. You know, with their position or something, or if they're councillor stuff. Oh, online.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. It is 7:01 PM. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 19th Duval City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me for the flags loop?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Isaacson.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer. He's, he's, yeah, anyway.
He'll be back.
Um, Mayor Proton McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Mercer.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
That's all we have right now. Al, Mayor Overlander.
Here. Thank you. Uh, we have a quorum. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? All right. Under Mayor's report, um, first I'm going to actually add admin so that Director Thomas can go over the hiring incentives that we weren't able to get to during committee of the whole, unless there are objections to that. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So moved.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And next we will move on to comments for the audience. Um, do we have anyone online that would like to provide public comment this evening? Great. I'm not seeing any members of the general public online, um, just staff. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our next item of business, which is a city council member interview. Um, we've had a vacancy since council member Lengel, uh, moved out of state a few months ago. Uh, we have one candidate for interview this evening on Agenda Bill 22-61. Um, interview candidates for city council position number seven, uh, which will include an executive session pursuant to RCW 42 dot three zero dot one one zero sub H to evaluate the qualifications of candidates for elective office. And as is tradition, I will pass, um, the gavel to our mayor Proten to handle this portion of the meeting. All right. Thank you. So. I mean, how would we do it in this setting? Should we have them stand at the podium or sit? Okay. Sorry. Would you mind? Well, welcome. Um, do you want to introduce yourself to everyone?
Sure. Um, so my name's Corey Love. I think I talked to a few of you. I'm not sure who. I didn't see many. Um, and I've lived here in Duval for almost five years with my family. And, um, I heard about the, it's funny. Actually, I just was reading through this and the person whose position this was was actually like a neighbor. Uh, I think she was actually also on the HOA at work I live. So it's kind of funny. Like I'd actually heard her name and, and actually came in with her before. It's just a strange, small world, small town. Um, but, uh, yeah. And so I kind of, it's been on my radar a little bit. Being the city councilist in general and, and certain of the things that are going on. Uh, for those of you that I talked to, it was a little bit about just, you know, what I could, how I could, you know, be of service the best way possible without just kind of driving around and looking at things and not knowing how things get done. And so I, uh, I sort of took the initiative to apply and, uh, that sort of worked out. I've talked to a few of you.
Well, I have a list of questions and I'll go ahead and just ask them and you can answer for everyone here. So the first one is what is your strategy for managing conflict if it were to arise with a fellow council member, mayor or staff member?
Um, well, that happens. I mean, my actual job, which I should say is a, like, I work as a, um, like a senior creative producer for film, like film and video. So, um, I manage big sets with like lots of different personalities and lots of different proficiencies. So lots of conflict, as you can imagine, and there's money flying around. So that doesn't help. Generally speaking, um, I like to get all the information before I make any kind of decision. Like I really would like to hear like every perspective possible. And then a lot of the times, you know, for me, it's about, you know, distilling that down into smaller points and attacking those points one at a time to see if there's something where there's actual some, you know, there's actually like alignment in areas where there may not be because there's too much of a big picture item that's clouding the alignment in other areas. So the strategy generally besides like light humor is, uh, is maybe breaking things down into segments. And sort of seeing like which of these things can we actually break off and solve? And then what are like our non-starters? And if, and if those need to be talked about in greater depth, we can at least get ourselves 85% of the way downfield before we feel like this is a total loss. Um, that's just something I may have to implement that. Like I also have a three-year-old and a six-year-old. I have a strategy with them a little bit, uh, successfully sometimes and when it's not, um, but, but it work. I have to do that all the time. But life is about information gathering, like just getting the information first, like understanding the perspectives first before I make any judgments.
All right. Thank you. Um, next one is what challenges do you expect to encounter in this position? And how would you be able to utilize your skills and experience if selected?
Challenges? Well, I would imagine there's a very, like, there's a bunch of different opinions on how things should go. It's a small town. There's not a lot of space in town. There's, you know, there's a lot of things to think about. Um, so I would imagine there's going to be just a, a varied opinion across the board on how things should happen and what they should do. Um, so from an experience perspective, I guess what I would say, and I, I was talking earlier with Rock is, yeah. And, um, I have had like a zillion different jobs. So I've like worked in every kind of field there is. I didn't have like a very straight and narrow path to my current career. So that's kind of putting me in a position, I think ultimately that what's made me good at, uh, what I do now. And I think just one of my skills is that I can really, I can really think about different areas of whether it's business or community and apply, I think, some of my learnings from being in those different areas to sort of a broader picture. And so that is what I would ultimately, I think, bring is some sort of, um, I would like to think like a pretty open mind around how things, you know, look across the board for the community. I think the other thing that's cool that I have like pretty small kids, so I'm planning on having them in this town for a long time, you know, which impacts my decision-making and my thinking about kind of what this, what this will look like overall. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, number three, what do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently? And how would you like to see the council address them?
Um, more coffee shops, more coffee. No, I, I think, well, we, I talked about this a little bit, like, um, with those, those folks that I already chatted with. But there's the growth component, which I'm sure is a huge piece of the conversation all the time. Like, how do you keep a small town, small town, but also respect the fact that we have to grow, we do have to scale it. We have to like support the community, um, around just the people that are here and then people who want to come here. We also want to keep the town attracted to people who are moving in to keep it at a certain level. You know, one of the reasons when we moved here, we didn't move to Carnation, we didn't move to Monroe, we didn't move to Kirkland or Redmond. It's because this had that unique small town feel that I grew up having in Colorado. Um, so I think that that would be one of the things that I would be concerned with. Is like growth and maintaining the energy and sort of the flavor of this town. Like I, I think that's like a very special thing about Duval. Duval days is like my favorite time of the year. It's like a time, it's like a season. I guess in my house it's just one day, but it's a whole season. And, um, and I really enjoy that, uh, that about our town. So that would be one thing. And then the other thing is just, um, you know, I think public safety and, and like the kids in this town and, and sort of how their lives are in this town, what that looks like for them, you know, having kids growing up here. I think a lot about, you know, the Uvalde thing happened and we, we got a great, uh, response from the police department. Only wrote a little letter, my wife and I. You know, just keeping this such a pretty special place. I live up off of, uh, Mannion. And like they, kids all run high school drive down and like people come out and like set up signs and stuff for them when they graduated high school. It's like a pretty special thing, you know? And, uh, that's like at the forefront of my mind, like, like making sure that there's like a presence, a community presence, and there's also like a, a presence for kids growing up. I grew up in two places in Colorado, Evergreen and Fort Collins. It's kind of different. Evergreen is a really small mountain town or was, I don't know what it's like now. And Fort Collins is a college town and Fort Collins had an old town a lot like this. And growing up, there were still opportunities for like kids to have jobs at coffee shops and like there were small businesses that supported like young people being able to be integrated in the community, like learn a job. Those things we have here are really important to me. So like preserving that energy is like probably top of the list for me, you know, I think.
All right. Thank you. So lastly, I just want to say, um, is there anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview?
Um, I guess just that I'm like, I'm naturally pretty curious. And so I'm, I would definitely say I'm green to like the whole, like, like this whole scenario would be new to me. But I'm naturally curious and I, I would be interested in learning. Like I'm an interested person. I looked at like what is required in terms of the two meetings a week and reading the documents. Like I looked at the documents for today's thing and I read through and there was many graphs that I was like, I would love to understand that better, but I don't know what it is. But I'm not afraid to like dig in and to look into those things. My job requires me to kind of have to learn certain things to a level of reasonable proficiency, but not like getting lost in the weeds relatively frequently, which I think is a strong suit. And I like that. I'm curious. Um, and, and, and that I'm like, I have a, I have a point of view, but I'm not, but I'm not closed minded. It's not a shut door. So I'm able to like have conversations. Like I have a point of view. I don't come just like, well, whatever, man. I have thoughts on things, but I have, I have friends from all over this spectrum of thoughts and ideas and everything else. And without getting into like my life story, I have friends and experiences from all over that spectrum as well. So, um, I think I'm good at listening and trying to understand. Have a little bit of an empathetic ear towards things that I may or may not necessarily agree with. Um, so yeah, maybe that's things I guess.
All right. Well, thanks again. That's all I have for you. So thanks for, um, coming in. And, um, I think at this point you can go ahead and have a seat if you'd like. Um, clerk, I don't know, was it the executive session a part of this where we're at right now then? Okay. How are we going to do that with one? You tell me how we're doing.
I'll just, um, we'll just leave and close the door to this room and just get out in the lobby.
Okay. And then how do, are we gonna call council member Napland on the phone or something?
Yeah.
Or we could have Corey sit outside. That's what I was thinking when I.
You have a Zoom link for the executive session.
You have a Zoom link. For the, yeah. So you switch over to the other Zoom call.
How would you do that on that laptop though? But keeping that open.
You're, um,
Yeah, no.
It's on your Outlook. And so you would, if you're logged into here, you would go into that meeting. The rest of us will remain in this meeting.
And so I'll just stop the video.
And council member Napland need to log on to the executives, log off of this meeting and log into the executive session back after executive session.
Yeah. So.
The first part of it might have been cut off because she was muted. Oh, I'm sorry. It sounds like the first part might have gotten cut off. Um, so Mr. Kenny and council member Napland will log off of the council meeting, log on to the executive session. Sarah will mute and, and turn off the camera on this session. And then you will come back to the regular council meeting at the conclusion of executive session.
And mayor, you will log into the executive session.
Uh, the clerk can remain in the room, correct?
I can, if you want me to.
Yeah, if, that's probably best with her computer.
I don't think you can have two Zooms going at one time though. So you'll have to have a second.
Oh, right. Okay.
Oh.
All right. Thank you. All right. Then I will pull it up. Okay. So we're gonna just stay here. So then I'll have.
You wanna go sit out in the lobby then? Before we can cheapie my shutting the door. Thank you.
You're gonna ask for me out?
Yeah.
You need to turn on mute.
Oh, yeah, but, but we'll, uh, first call the executives, say how long it's gonna be.
Yes, you do that. Yes. So, uh, we will be heading into executive session for a period of 10 minutes. Into the normal meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That actually worked out pretty well.
What's that?
They were outside too. It was good.
And that means. Oh, yeah. Do you have the oath?
I knew I'm going to ask you that and I can, I did not print one out, but I can.
Email it to you so you can look at it.
I can email it.
Okay. Now you can look at it in your phone. My computer. Just don't forget. All right. Um, we're coming back from executive session. Uh, we'll give the clerk just a moment to get situated.
Yeah.
And Sarah, what are you mailing out?
I have, um,
Something to.
Oh, just something.
I am emailing the oath of office to the mayor. Oh, oh, some, yeah, I just, I'm sorry.
Well, it's just, it's part of the packet. It's preparatory. It's in there. So I asked for it.
I'm going to, yeah. Now.
All right. Well, I think we can go ahead. Um, and I'll ask if there, uh, is a motion to approve, um, agenda bill twenty-two dash sixty-one to, oh, um, actually Laura just was asking if it's at the end of the agenda. It's not at the end of the agenda. So we, this is the appropriate place. Um, does anyone have a motion or a recommendation to approve, um, a candidate for the vacant city council position?
I move, uh, to approve agenda bill twenty-two dash sixty-one, um, interview of candidates for city council position number seven.
Sorry. Do you have a candidate you're recommending?
Corey Lovett.
Love it.
Love it. For, for, uh, for position number seven.
Second, all right, is there discussion? If anyone want to provide some comments, um, before you take your vote. I, I was just going to say, I'm like, it might be weird if you don't say anything. And for the audience, this is a little unusual because it is not normal to only have one candidate on the ballot. Um, and so, uh, or on the, on the agenda. Um, so we're a little out of sorts. Um, so please bear with us tonight.
I just wanted to say to Cory, we, I really enjoyed talking to you and I'm excited, um, at the thought of you joining council and, um, yeah, I just loved all your answers to everything and excited to have you on board.
And just to sort of add to Mayor Protem's comments, uh, you know, Cory and I had an opportunity to talk this afternoon. Uh, it was sort of a high point of my day. It was a sort of a crazy day. But, you know, we, we covered a range of topics. I appreciate the thoughtful responses, um, your sort of, you know, open mindedness and growth mindset around learning, you know, and, and, and some of the proactive outreach you'd already demonstrated. I think the example you gave around, you know, reaching out to the police department is, is great to say, to hear. So again, appreciate, um, your interview and, and it was a, as I said, a, a good experience for me, I came away with some really positive feelings. Thanks.
Um, council member Napland.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo those thoughts. I also, uh, spoke with Cory this morning. We had a great conversation and I think he's an excellent candidate for us to consider. Great.
Council member Ison.
Sorry, didn't call you. Uh, you that public policy. I failed in my duties, council member. So if, if you are so lucky to get voted on board, you'll probably make a couple mistakes too.
All right.
Approval of this agenda bill will, uh, that will be, uh, approval for Cory to fill the vacant position. Cause I don't get that from the agenda bill. I thought we had to vote separately on that.
Usually what happens, right? If you have more than one candidate is you come out of executive and then you vote by matrix to select the person. But since you have only one candidate, I thought you would come out of executive and make a motion if you wanted to, to appoint, to appoint him to the position, if that's what you'd like. You can do that. You have a deadline.
And is that, is that my approval of this agenda bill?
Um, council member Mercer moved to approve the agenda bill, appointing Cory Lovett to the position.
Yeah. So that's what, that's the action you're taking and what we need you to make a decision on.
Okay. Uh, good. Yeah. No, it's just a process thing.
Okay.
All right. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and I will invite, um, pull it up here. Uh, I'll invite Mr. Lovett up to the podium and I will administer the oath of office. And you will be, uh, welcome to sit at the table of this.
I do not leave all my stuff everywhere. I need to bring my glasses next time.
Oh, yeah. So, all right, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rick Lovett.
I, Cory Lovett, right?
Oh, sorry. Having been appointed to the office of city of Duval.
Having been appointed to the office, uh, having appointed to the office by city of Duval.
Of city of Duval, council position number seven.
Council position number seven.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And then I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The constitution of the state of Washington.
Constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to pull up a seat and participate. So let the record reflect that, uh, Mr. Cory Lovett has appointed, been appointed to council position number seven um, and is now, uh, present for the remainder of the council meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
That's the swiftest process we have had in one of these appointments ever. So, um, way to go folks. And I, I, I will say I'm very excited to have you on board. And welcome.
Thank you very much.
Um, so moving on, uh, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? So moot. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And let me hold on. I'm going to grab Mr. Lovett. The actual agenda. So it doesn't have any different.
I have the copies that on my phone. Oh, that's much better.
Much better.
If I use that spare one.
Yes. Oh, we'll move on to scheduled items. Um, first up is the mayor's report. Um, want to report that, uh, council member Perry held a town hall here in this building last Thursday. Uh, Mayor Protem McHenry, uh, Chief DeBach and Chief Erskine were in attendance. Um, it was a good turnout, uh, lots of fabulous questions for our new council member. Um, I think one of the things, uh, that really stood out is how engaged and, and active and proactive she is in this district in the very short period of time that she's been elected. Um, and we definitely had folks from Duval and outside of Duval, um, since it is representing the third district. Um, Chief Erskine treated us to, uh, dinner beforehand. So we all got a great visit and, and, uh, got to connect, uh, much more than you normally do at the town hall. So I was very appreciative to have her out here um, and look forward to her, uh, scheduling future town halls in the city of Duval. Um, next up, I wanted to, uh, let folks know that our first summer stage of the year was a huge success this year. Um, I want to give Cass Holdham and big props for the first summer stage, um, of the year, having over six hundred and forty attendees, which is a huge number. Normally you have between a hundred and three hundred um, for the very first one until folks get used to the, the series going. Um, so it was great weather, uh, the band was great and we've got five more concerts coming up. So hope to see everybody every Wednesday night. You know where to find me. Um, next up, I just wanted to touch base quickly. Um, I received an email from Matt Kuharic from K four C. Um, checking in to see if council wanted, is having any further discussions about signing on to the climate uh, commitments for K four C. And again, that's no commitment to changing policy. It's commitment to supporting the efforts that King County is doing to, um, mitigate climate change. So, um, you don't have to answer now unless you want to, but please get back to me and Mayor Protem. Um, so that if we are going to move that direction, we can simply get a resolution and that commitment on the agenda for approval. Um, and then, um, next up, just a reminder from the clerk, we have now three council members that will need to get bio information into the clerk for the website. And I have, and I have some updating to do as well. So I'm not, you're, you're not alone in that. Um, so if you can get that to the clerk as soon as possible, that would be great. Um, and then I will go ahead and turn it over to Director Thomas, uh, for admin and to go over the, um, employee recruitment incentives, uh, discussion that is postponed from committee of the whole.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, this is Laura Thomas for the record. Uh, our admin update will be pretty quick and our recruitment, I think, will go pretty quickly as well. Uh, as you know, we are continuing to implement the open gov. Um, we are super excited. We're going live with the building and public works module that goes out to our development community on August first. We have finished testing and we're in the final implementation stages and working with our other departments. So it's a really exciting time. Uh, yesterday we went live with the city administrator recruitment. So that of course was very exciting news for all of us. Uh, the first review of applications will be done mid-August by the mayor and consultant. And the first interviews will, uh, be in the, at the end of August with the mayor and consultant. Um, there's an executive panel interviews that are also towards the end of August. There's a secondary panel that is on September ninth. But please put on your calendar, a save the date for Saturday, September tenth. And that will be a council, um, portion of the process. A department administrative updates. We're continuing to work on budget. Um, the exciting news is we're doing this through open gov and everything's going pretty smoothly. Uh, the sewer department gets a big kudos. They finished theirs and came through Dana and she wanted to say a kudos award. So I wanted to make sure and say that publicly, um, because it is our first big lift of our new module for the budgeting. Um, Saber Snowqualmy will be, uh, filming in Duval on August eighteenth and twenty twentieth. This is part of our economic development grant through the port of Seattle. So we're super excited about that. Stay tuned. You may get an invitation to be extras, um, for the filming. Um, one exciting piece is they are coming out on a day that we have our music in the park and they will be filming out there that evening. So please join, um, that evening. Uh, DFA hosted another amazing fan blast. I hope that you were able to go down there. But I've heard from vendors that it was a record breaking event. So that's really good to hear. Um, we have our next music in the park this Wednesday at seven. And then I know that, uh, the police people will probably be speaking a little bit more about this, but we have national night out on Tuesday, August second. If you would like to participate, you will go ahead and email, um, the police department and that's, um, I cannot read that. Uh, it's one of the officers. Sorry, you guys, let me. Oh, uh, Officer Dean, thank you. I have this on my small screen. Um, department updates and this one's for community development. Our senior planner Troy Davis is headed off to grad school. This is his last official, um, city council meeting. He will become a part-time employee after his vacation and settling in the state of Arizona. We had a really nice kickoff luncheon this week. So we will, we will miss him and his in-person and we'll also miss Cabo, who is his dog that comes into our office quite often. We're starting to see permit revenues up. It's taken a little longer, I think, this year to see permits come in, but we have about 40 more in the pipeline that are under current review. And as soon as we see some of these final plots and the completion of the One Acre Park at Toll Brothers, we will probably see close to another 100 permits come in. We are in the process for the senior planner recruitment. We haven't received any new applications. We might consider the recruitment of an associate planner and accelerate the planning manager, the manager position. We may need to go out for an RFP for Housing Needs Assessment, so stay tuned on that for the local portion, including the Housing Action Plan. We are issuing another RFP for Planning Services for here and Examine Our Architecture and Environmental Services. As part of the last round, we did not get very many submittals, so we're hopeful this time, or actually even none at all in some of the categories. Public Works has been super busy. This is the time of year where everything is growing, but they're doing a ton of other work as well. They have electrical work at Taylor Park, hydrant cleaning, graying and painting contract to be issued soon. Estimate is under 50K. They plan to issue this in two parts, 372 hydrants, which is not all of them. Wow. Lake Rasmussen weed, these, obnoxious weed is gone, so that's pretty good. They worked on that last summer. They're looking at a fire system panel replacements at the wastewater treatment plant for them, and they're preparing for biosolids hauling, three-year contract. Are there any questions before I move on to the recruitment incentives?
No, Director Thomas.
Thank you. We've been having this discussion a little bit internally, but we also discussed this with the Finance Administration Committee, and they said it was time to come forward and have a first discussion with the council. We are definitely having, not just in our city, but regionally, recruitment challenges. The candidate pools are fairly small. Historical job openings within our region in all sectors of local government and the private sector. An example is our senior planner position has been open for almost two months with little to no bites yet. We wanted to talk about some of the other challenges that we might be seeing out there, and we've talked, I've actually talked to a council member about this recently. Community times are increasing to and from Duval, which was not the norm, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. So we're starting to see that as a pinching point. We also have, in Duval, we kind of were jack-of-all-trades, and we have that expectation as well, kind of within all of our departments. And so that can be challenging for recruitment. We probably lack some non-salary incentives, as I've been going out and trying to figure out, you know, why are we not getting applicant, applicants in? People reported that, you know, they get an education reimbursement, they get matching dollars for retirement. They don't want to lose their existing vacation and longevity as part of coming to a new city. There's just, and there's just a lack of a skilled workforce out there. I think salary might be a little bit, you know, as we move on. Some candidates are like, you know, we already make that, and they're already at the top, so that, that could be one of the issues. I think there's also some economic uncertainty as well. You know, you have tenure where you are, and so if you stay there, sometimes you can write out any sort of blip in the economy. Not always, but sometimes. What are other communities doing? They are having signing bonuses. We're starting to see those more. Most of the time, we see them in the $2,500 to $5,000 range, but I was listening to the news last week, and now we've seen some popping up to the $30,000 range. So what opportunities, you know, could we look at? I think we'd want to look at maybe a temporary program that would be for about a year and look at a $2,500 to a $5,000 signing bonus over maybe a two-year period, and then request a two-year employee commitment. Things like a MetroCard, an Orca Card for those that might want to take the bus in and out. We do actually have at least one employee taking advantage of the bus every day to commute in and out. We could use our ARPA dollars to look at these recruit and recruitment incentives for this next year. I do want to see what other suggestions council might have, and FAC can bring up any items that I may have missed. I think I got everything. And then this evening, you know, I'm looking for a little bit of direction, because I would need to draft an ordinance that amends temporarily Chapter 4, and I would need to draft a resolution to approve any sort of dollar incentives.
Great. Thank you, Director Thomas. Any feedback and thoughts from council at this point? And I'll start first with the Finance Committee. Councilmember Naplin.
Sure, I'll jump in. We actually had a great conversation about this, and it seemed like, in general, the committee was open to the idea. Some of the thoughts that came up, I'll just say a few of mine, were, I noticed that at other cities, this type of program wasn't across the board for every position. It looked to be targeted towards especially difficult-to-fill positions. My personal concern was that we've hired quite a few people recently, and some positions are, are less difficult to fill. And if we then started offering that same position, a signing bonus, people who just, were just hired would say, hey, I just got hired, I didn't get it. It could create some dissatisfaction unnecessarily. So the feedback I gave was perhaps we could have some kind of threshold of when this kicks in. Have we tried to put the position out there? Didn't get any response. Then, you know, administration could make a decision to offer a signing bonus. That was one thing we talked about. You know, I think Director Thomas mentioned, you know, do you have the entire amount right upfront? Do you phase it in as they've been here for one or two years? Different things like that. Trying to think of what else. It was actually in our Finance Committee meeting notes, and there were some great comments by Councilmember Hogan, Councilmember McHenry, so I don't want to share all of what they said and give them a chance to actually share some of the things that they brought up, so.
Great, thank you.
I don't know that I have much to add. I personally had concern about offering a signing bonus, but Councilmember Naplin brought up a good point about that if, if someone was just hired in a similar position and then we're now offering it, that that could be an issue for morale for our current employees. So, you know, she brought up some really good points there, but I, my concern really was, I think it was initially discussed as offering it straight across the board for all of our positions. And I think it's really important that we narrow it down and maybe only do it with the hardest positions to fill. I don't know that I have anything else to add, but I was hesitant to offer this, but open-minded and willing to listen to, you know, the rest of council.
Go ahead.
I really loved the Metro Orca Card idea, especially because it would be an opt-in thing, not just to hand them out to everyone. It would be like, if they would use it, that would be, I think, a really great incentive, because it wouldn't matter to everybody, of course, but for some it might. And then, you know, I, I'm in favor of having, in general, an incentive program, but I don't mean for it, like, across the board, more like there are parameters that would trigger it happening. And I think if it's done right, it would catch those difficult positions. But I, I think my only interest in developing some kind of parameter or trigger system that goes across the board and naturally catch the difficult positions would just be for efficiency, so that we're not always coming back to the drawing board every time, like, oh, should we do this again? Like, if it was just known that here are things that would trigger it happening, and it could be, it's been posted for a certain number of weeks or something like that. I, I don't know, I would leave that to, you know, the directors to figure out. But I think those are, I think that encapsulates most of my thoughts on that for now.
Councilmember Schaefer?
This is really more of a question. Actually, for anybody who wants to try to address it, but is it possible to step up our recruitment program? I can trust, I'm not familiar with how we currently recruit, but there are, you know, firms that charge more and perhaps provide better results. I suspect that's been considered, but I'd like to hear, Laura, maybe you can start with that?
That actually, Councilmember Schaefer, that's a really good question, and we've talked about that. Historically, we've used a recruiting firm for director-level, executive-level positions. We haven't yet had to do it for, you know, what I would call lower senior-staff positions. It's something that we could consider. But that, that comes at a pretty decent cost, and so we were going to try, you know, a couple of other mechanisms first. For an example, if we went out to do a recruitment, just say for this position, it probably easily cost us $15,000. And if we did more of an executive level search, like, say, when we hire a new planning director, a planning manager, or whatever that is, that could be significant, that could be significantly more to recruit. But it's a really good question, and we did think about that internally. And I think if we get to a place where we really can't recruit something after several months, then we would really have to look at coming back to council for recruitment firm search.
Okay, good, good. So as a possible intern stepped in, I'm certainly not opposed to providing some kind of signing bonus with parameters attached to. I think that's a very good idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, this is sort of a question, a comment. And again, it's lack of familiarity about all the practices that we use today, but in addition to sort of the signing bonus, which is more employee-directed in terms of incentive or potential employee, do we have an existing program for internally, for referrals, if someone refers a candidate? That's something, you know, we're used to $2,500 or whatnot, if they get to a certain person in the process. A lot of times, word of mouth, you know, that, that happens anyway, but there's a closed community, there's regional forums where they might interact. The other was, I know, internal, and it's two questions for you, Laura, and then I'll let you answer them. And then the second one is, I know we've talked about for, for some of the projects, you know, like the U-Dub program, and I think some others where we leveraged, if we're, we're doing it essentially on-the-ground recruiting, if there's a forum or an opportunity to engage with some of the local universities, bring people in the ground floor. Again, you know, you've got to have alignment in terms of role and, but just trying to think outside the box a little bit as terms of other opportunities to generate interest.
Yeah, Councilmember Mercer, that's a really good question. Currently, we don't have an internal can't-referral policy, so maybe I can include that in a policy. As far as, oh my gosh, the other question about, okay, say the last question again, I totally lost it.
Yes, like, I know in terms of, and I'm.
The U-Dub, I remember now. So we, so our lower, yeah, our lower-level kind of positions that are like on the ground, like, our assistant planner, we, we recruited that position through the University of Washington, which was very successful. It not, it isn't as much for an upper-level position, but we do utilize all of our universities and reach out. And in fact, a lot of our existing employees will help us recruit and reach out to their universities and contacts as well.
Yeah, and that's where I was kind of going. I knew I could outreach through LinkedIn, through the MyUniversity, or other things where there's sort of an, an internal network, potentially to reach some of those more senior roles. Otherwise, I, you know, essentially agree with some of the other comments that were sent today, particularly in this economic climate and, you know, setting a threshold, whether it's a time-based, whether it is level at role, whether it's a number of applicants that would be a trigger, which would at least normalize or provide some equity in terms of, in potential fairness, that it wasn't necessarily specific to a role that you may or may not, you know, have applied for and be employed currently, but really more when certain conditions are met, that it triggers a process that is an exception-based process to essentially fill that role.
That's a really good point. We, you know, our, our internal gut instinct is to have either the city administrator or the mayor, like, some sort of form that we would push out that says, you know, we looked on, you know, AWC, we looked at all these different places. There's 20 or 30 jobs out there in the market. We're recommending that we use this incentive-based policy, and maybe it's like three or four things to recruit that position.
Yeah. And just to add, currently on Association of Washington City's site, I think there's more than a dozen, if not close to 20, planner positions posted. Many of them are at or well above our top-end salary range. So you look at proximity to the city of Duval, and several of those cities are close in proximity, which is, I have no doubt, making it more difficult to recruit, and planners are leaving the, the business left and right at this moment. Councilmember Isaacson, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, those signing moments either, I mean, I totally respect and worry about the perception sense of recently hired employees, but the timing is, timing, you know, and I think we should definitely look at learning from this and get a process in place. But I'd be over to the directors on, you know, how much inefficiencies are we losing by waiting? You know, that's only, and that's costing us money, too. So I don't know what that number is, and not like anyone could put a dollar value on it, but, you know, it's a, I would want to get to a clear process, given the interest of staffs and the needs of one that, can we at least put a shot in the dark at first and just be ready for leadership challenge of going to those people at the director level of saying, you know, yeah, I'm sorry, there wasn't one when you came along, and hopefully understand timing is everything. You just, that timing, it's hard to say, but.
I, I think the good news is, is that we don't have many recent employees within our, other than, within our police department. And so when you look at the positions that are open, they're new positions. And I will say that other cities are going through this exact same thing right now. And so we're already behind the ball in having the discussion. So this is something that's happening all over the place, and, and for example, and it's happening in reverse as well. So, for example, where I'm employed, there was a retention bonus that's being provided, and I came in just a month or so after that retention bonus eligibility for that retention bonus. And I knew that full while coming in, that did not deter my decision to take the, take the position. So it's, it's a good consideration and acknowledgement to have, but it's not necessarily impacting the overall morale, I believe, at most jurisdictions start going through this right now. Councilmember.
Just to add super quick, because you just reminded me of something else we talked about at FAC was, you know, you can structure it different ways, like, here's the bonus, but you get this much when you're first hired on, and then after a certain amount of time, you get the rest or something like that to try and, because it's expensive to have turnover, so it could just help incentivize them sticking around a bit longer.
Yeah, if I could.
Yes.
You know, maybe think of something else I totally forgot to, is, you know, in respect for those concerns, is we, part of the bonus sign-on is, we might want to look at, let's roll in some type of retention package as well, so that those people that do get concerns, there's, there's this retention package coming out there, too, that, you know, could keep people on board. That's probably something we should.
Absolutely.
I was just going to ask, add that right now, there are 238 jobs posted on AWC, and 44 are in planning. It's pretty, it's not just planning, so I don't want to complain just about planning. It's pretty significant across the board.
Yeah. And Councilmember Levitt, you're new, but want to provide you an opportunity, if you would like to speak, but I also understand if you're just more observing in this discussion this evening.
I'm just observing. It's the city planner position, is that?
A senior planner, and we're in a situation right now of record growth and a small planning department that's been understaffed for quite a long time, and having statutory requirements and deadlines to meet with all of our planning incentives. So we're not doing, have been unable for the last four years to do much of the long-range planning that, that we have to do as a city.
Got it. Okay. No, I mean, I'm an information gathering, though, right?
Okay, perfect. So what I am hearing is relative consensus versus thing. So if it's okay with council, I would recommend Mayor Pretem, since Mayor Pretem's on the Finance Committee and actively involved with working with us in administration, that we take what we've heard back and come back to council with a proposal at the next meeting, and maybe a couple of options for consideration and discussion. Is everyone in agreement with that? Is everyone in agreement with that? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Director Thomas. And we we kind of went over most of the administration update instead of just the recruitment. So we'll we'll get back to the other part of administration. We get to that portion of the agenda. But next up would be the King County Fire District Forty Five report. And clerk did she first can submit a written report this evening? Okay, great, and he's not here, so we will move on to the Duval Police Report with our police chief, Dubak.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff, and community members who are present. I'm Chief Dubak, Duval Police, helping writing with the June twenty twenty two staff report for the police department. On June sixteenth, we had Officer Head graduate from Basic Law Enforcement Academy. He's begun his field training program, and he's currently in week one of month two. So he has one more month to go. On June twenty eighth, Officer Blair was sworn in, and he came to us as a lateral officer, as we discussed earlier, how many? And he's in week three of month one of the field training. We have a police administration specialist candidate and an additional entry level candidate in the background process with public safety testing. They are a little behind in their process currently because the number of applicants across the board for police positions. So they're getting through them, but it's a little bit slower than what we're used to. So I anticipate the police administration specialist hearing something back probably the next week or two. And then the entry level candidates probably going to be a few more weeks after that. So hopefully in the next month we'll have answer about both of those. As of today, we still have one sergeant position open and one police officer position opening. And we've exhausted our list, and we're going to have to start recruiting additional people again for the position. National night out is in two weeks, like Director Thomas said earlier. It's on Tuesday, August second. Officer Dean is coordinating that event. This year, I anticipate fifteen neighborhoods participating, which is a huge turnout. I think in the past, the largest amount we had was twelve, so it's getting bigger each year, which is exciting because we're looking forward to getting out there and spending the night with the community. This past month, we began our safety program on the river. We have monitored the swimming area and the no wake zone. We have contacted several boats and jet skis to warn them about driving too fast through that area. The program's been well received by the community, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback regarding it. As you may have noticed, your packets in your packets, the month of police stats format has changed this month. This month also includes the traffic stop demographics. That's a program that Redman started last year in June to start tracking the demographics of the traffic stops by officers, so that information is in your packet. I'm not sure how, what the frequency is that I'll be getting that, but as I get it, I'll be giving it to you guys, so you can see what's going on there. We have also included the minutes from the June twenty eighth Public Safety Committee meeting for your convenience and review. Is there any questions?
Mayor Pretend McHenry.
You just answered my question, which was, I mean, that's incredible. I was really enjoying reading through all of that. So it's good to know when you can, we'll see it, but it's, I mean, that's a lot of information gathering, so I appreciate you guys doing that, though.
Thank you. Anything else?
Moving on to council committee reports, first up is finance and administration.
Councilmember Nefflin, I think, might.
If she's the chair, then, yeah, she is.
Yep, sorry about that. It takes me a minute to get my camera back on. So our last meeting was July sixth, and in attendance was councilmember Hope, councilmember McHenry, myself, Director Mason, and Director Thomas. And we had quite a few items on the agenda. I'm I'm going to try to just go over it briefly. But I I do have the minutes or the meeting summary uploaded into our committee folders. So first item, we discussed the city, which was the city administrator item, the signing bonus for recruitment. And we pretty much talked about all the things that we had talked about just previously. The second item was the Big Rock Ball Field Reserve. This was an item that I brought forward regarding how much we were reserving for that. And let's see here, the consensus was that the prior resolution was unclear how much to reserve. This was prior to two thousand eighteen. And so we chose to go with the fifty percent reserve, which is what council explicitly passed a resolution that started in two thousand eighteen. So, or started in two thousand nineteen, sorry, I'm not being very clear. It's in the notes. So the next item was the biennial budget format. That was another item that was brought forward by myself. I believe we're going to be discussing this as a council. And it has to do with, do we lump the entire two years together as we budget, or do we look at each, we budget both years at the same time, but budget them as separate years? So it's it's something that I believe we'll be bringing forward to the COW. It also has to do with how the reporting would look as well. Do we look at the two years all lumped together, or is it more clear to see each year separately? So that was an item we discussed. The next item was the two thousand twenty three, twenty four revenues. And we saw, I think it was the, maybe the exact same presentation that Director Mason shared with us at the COW today. And my comments at that time were the same as what I shared today, tonight. So I will go over that again. Next, we looked at ARPA funding. And if we would use ARPA funding for the cost of implementing the salary schedule changes. We have a robust discussion about that. And it wasn't clear what the next step was, if you were going to bring this to the COW. But there was quite a bit of discussion about whether you would use one time money to pay for an ongoing and increasing expense. Just how that might work, and if there would be other ways to use the ARPA money that would be more beneficial. And it's all in the notes, so. That's it. Our next meeting is, I believe, August fourth.
All right, thank you. Any questions for councilmember Nefflin? Seeing none, moving on to land use.
I don't have anything to report. We canceled tomorrow's meeting, so I don't think I have anything.
Okay, great. Moving on to public safety.
And nothing, we did, we did a public safety meeting. The chief covered what we talked about.
Great, thank you. And Public Works?
The chair was at the meeting.
Yeah, I actually have.
Something to add at the end.
Yeah, so they haven't been uploaded yet. That's sort of on me. I got the template from Steve. Director Lenishewski this morning, so doing some updates. But we met on July thirteenth. Director Lenishewski, councilmember Schaefer, myself, along with Gavin Harold and Ben Wrestler met. Councilmember Isaacin indicated was was absent. We covered a number of things. Some were touched on in the council, the whole, but received an update on the overlay project, which at that point was ninety five percent complete, weather obviously cooperated. It's been great, sort of going down two seventy fifth and one fifty second. I know there was also some work on one forty fifth and then some other sections of the city. And I think everyone, you know, that's a very tangible, visible use of funds. We got an update sort of on the redwork CIP. From the perspective, a lot of the existing CIP projects are nearly complete. And so there's an opportunity for some new candidates sort of going going forward. We spent a good amount of time talking about the use of ARPA funds. Some of that was discussed, I think, Director Lenishewski indicated he was still working on sort of specific recommendations around the front edge facade improvements. And so that he was going to come back to us. I think we covered a little bit, but for the record, the the possible investments in the Woodinville-Duval intersection, which really comprised based on on the available funding, the conceptual design, traffic study, and some some options. So it was good within a relatively small investment. We at least got a jumpstart in terms of some of the the opportunities down down the road. Councilmember Schaefer brought up some shorter term potential investments, which was around some of the flower pods, baskets, and and some options to explore, which Director Lenishewski said he would look into. We did discuss the sound system in a little more detail. We touched on on both the costs, but, you know, an item that was brought up in addition to just from an ambiance or how we would use that, and I think some of the comments that were were raised in the council hall in terms of engagement with the business community are relevant. There is also another opportunity that was identified around sort of emergency response, also various city events. So there's there's multi use that I think we'd want to dig into a little more. The one comment that Director Lenishewski did make, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a fairly long lead time in terms of some of those systems, which just reflects the existing supply chain issues that we're dealing with today. We talked about the third avenue and sort of bringing that forward to get some guidance or final recommendations around the from the council in terms of the proposal that we wanted to go with. We did, you know, again, there's an opportunity to use some ARPA funds there. I don't believe they were, we were currently looking at federal dollars, but there are some additional criteria we would need to go through if we explored those. And then I think the last two items we touched on for three was the police station in terms of the plans being ready. The wastewater treatment office in terms of, we discussed in some detail, the cost increases around with the square footage, the the larger square footage of the final design, some identified structural investments that are required, and then HVAC work. We discussed the Big Rock Ball Fields and provided some of our guidance or feedback in terms of what approach we we thought we would like to explore more. Again, that's subject to a final recommendation by the the council on a specific option. Given, I think we've expended the the concept piece of the of the grants. And then the the last thing, we just got and received an update on the final product dates. And I believe Rio Vista, sixty five degrees in Sunset Court were in final plat. And then Thayer Platte was a new, essentially a new plat, which consisted of sixteen units. So hopefully I didn't miss anything.
Thank you. Any questions for councilmember Mercer?
No, I just wanted to add, I was at the last city council meeting, after we had our first public work meeting together. My video was cutting in and out real choppy. And one of the things that I wanted to bring to discussion, we've had some kind of off, unofficial conversation, but kind of put on the record. One of the things we discussed is, you know, we're getting pressured to get this ARPA money spent. And there's varying degrees of, you know, a list of our top seven things that are voted, and there's varying opinions on whether some of them are good use of taxpayer dollars or not, but getting pressured into spending money on stuff with a timeline. I pitched the idea and want to throw it out to the council to chew on and think about. I don't know, Mayor Pretend, I'll get with you if you got how we could pursue the possible option of, you know, taking some money and we can spend it immediately on things that the city we know needs to get done. Staff needs, the mayor needs, we all know needs, whether it be processes being updated, staff being hired, whatever it is, temporary staff, something we can spend the money really quick now, but get a concurrent somehow another process to fence off city budget that we currently have, and then take our time with some of these other things, so we don't hastily waste money. It just, I think that's maybe a possible physically responsible way to go about it. I just feel a constant pressure in all these corners of trying to spend our money. We're trying to take care of the public works, you know, here, customer Nefflin, you know, these, you guys from the finance committee. So just an idea I'm throwing out there, Mayor Pretend, I'll get with you, and maybe Mayor figure out how can we go about this, have the whole council either agree or disagree, at least maybe decompress some of the pressure on there, but and help the staff as well.
Thank you, councilmember. I assign you if I have have been pretty much on the same page with that, so. Excellent, thank you. All right, do we have any ad hoc committee reports this evening?
So we canceled the procedures and code of conduct meeting because we feel like we're actually there, like we can come to council now with with what we've what we have. But we we really would like to meet with our attorney to go over it first before we bring it to COW. So that's kind of the next steps for that.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend.
I just want to fully admit that you're waiting on me, because I was going to fix the formatting and the, and then we're going to meet with the attorney, so, but it'll happen soon.
Thank you. All right, does anybody on council have any other items you'd like to report on tonight? Councilmember Hoag and then Mayor Pretend McHenry.
So a couple items that I'd like to chat about that came up at the Sound Cities Association pick meeting. One is that, you might all know about this, but I I really was unaware of that. Nine eight eight is now, did you two guys already? So it took effect July sixteenth. And so at the pick meeting, what we talked about was that going into the future with this, they're planning on creating this state department of health is going to be adopting some rules in July of two thousand twenty three to standardize the crisis call centers. And then in July of two thousand twenty four, then they will be going, designating the crisis call center hubs. And so for right now, when you call nine eight eight, I guess it goes to the one eight hundred number that's always been in existence. But it's kind of nice, it's kind of like nine one one, you've got this one number to remember you can call if you're in a crisis situation. So I think that's great. The other thing I learned about, which you guys probably already all know about this too, that there's Redman did, instead of doing fireworks this year, they did drone fireworks. So I I I never really heard of that either, but they're really cool. I went online and read up about what they do, but that to me is like a good solution if we have years in the future that we can't have fireworks because of, you know, fire safety. And so anyways, that was just something that I thought was really cool that Redman did. And they said it costs about the same as doing a normal fireworks show, so, yeah, I thought that was pretty cool.
And Mayor Bernie reported that on that today at the Strong Mayors meeting, and she said there were a lot of complaints. And then afterwards, a lot of, wow, that was really neat.
Cool. Yeah.
Those was like a bunch of drones flying around. Yeah.
Thank you, councilmember Hoag. Mayor Pretend?
Yeah, so I was just jotting down notes quickly to see what I want to talk about. And then I was just realizing how much time has passed, because we didn't have a meeting at the beginning of July. So at the end of June, myself as well as the mayor attended the AWC conference in Vancouver. And one of the things I did was I went to a lot of sessions, more than I could like just talk about right here. But they had meeting materials as well as my personal notes that I took. And the Public Safety Committee already knows, because there was one session on like pairing mental health professionals with first responders. And so I've sent that info to the Public Safety Committee for them to look over. But there were a lot of other cool sessions that I went to as well, and I'm happy to, when I get time here. I still need to just put it all together in a package and send it to everyone, so that you can look through some of the topics that, you know, I heard. But it was just a great conference, and I'd really encourage anyone who could in the future. You don't even have to go for the whole time. And then I sing with AWC, it's always within Washington, so you could always go down for a day and catch a couple training sessions or something like that. And then I just wanted to say that we had our budget workshop on like, what, June twenty ninth? And it was, there were so many people involved, so it was amazing that we got as many people as we could to attend. But I just really appreciated everyone's like input, and I just finished typing up my notes from that, and I will be sending those out tomorrow. So you'll get to see all the flip sheets we worked on and stuff. Overall, because I normally get emails the day after July fourth, I didn't get any this year. I felt for some weird reason, it was a really mild holiday this year. It was pretty quiet, maybe just in my neck of the woods. I'm not sure how everyone else was. And then lastly, just I attended Sand Blast, and it was amazing as always, and just nice to be back down there by the beach, so, yeah, that's it.
Right, thank you. Moving on to administration, next up, we have wastewater treatment plant building remodel cost update. And that's because Director Thomas got a little bit ahead and did the general updates and city administrative recruitment before, which is just fine. We got, we got through it. So Director Lenishewski, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Steve Lenishewski Pub Works, and Corey, welcome. I'm glad you have three and six year olds, and I no longer do, so.
Someone's got to do it.
Yeah, we we've been there, so, different time of phase of my life, but either way, all good stuff, so welcome. So, like councilmember Mercer has mentioned, we did. So like Councilmember Mercer has mentioned, we did talk at the most recent committee meeting on a couple of the remodeling updates. Good news, the police station is just about ready. We actually have to list the window schedule we're going to replace and then we're good to go. The bad news is the treatment plant remodel. You know, this is in the folder, so I can send this out afterwards. Main floor, you know, lobby, kind of on the side where it exists now, conference room stays, stairs stay. And then some reconfiguring on the main floor. Currently, this is all garage except for the restroom, so that gets open concept flooring, you know, with a goal to maintain flexibility in the future. Since we aren't quite sure who we're going to be or where we're all going to be, but know we need space now. Offices along the back, break room, shower, restroom, storage, second floor. Same thing, maintain as much open concept as possible. Restrooms, engineer room, quiet room slash conference room, phone call room. I think the one thing we have learned from the pandemic is we'll have virtual meetings, probably more than we obviously ever did before. But it can get kind of loud and with some open concepts, we're going to be either A, you know, some quiet spaces or B, conference rooms. So that was our consultant's approach to kind of making this open and flexible, be it provide some space to have those conversations, maintain offices, conference room upstairs, and some more touchdown spaces for interns and consultants. So how we've come to kind of the bad news, and again, as soon as we can find this out, we wanted to share. Costs have increased. We did originally figure this was going to be nine hundred and six thousand. We're right above two million. Part of that is my approach was trying to keep one of the bays. And again, since this is not quite visual, we're not in person. Offices now, like for Corey's sake, we have a whole building. Half of it is garages, half of it is floor space and an office space. So we were thinking we might be able to salvage some of that garage space and keep one of the bays. But that attributes thirty-eight percent footage cost for two stories of improvement. So that's kind of an easy one to, per foot cost, you can see how that goes up. HVAC is proportioned as well, so the more H, more space you have, the more HVAC per the preliminary calcs it takes to, to serve it. Structural costs, we didn't expect this, but our foundation is not necessarily traditionally tethered to the structure. And what that means is normally you have your concrete foundation, your sill plate, and then that's how you bolt it to the concrete foundation. And then that's the, the mending plate that binds your, your structure to your foundation. This is called a wet set sill plate, which nobody knew, so there are no bolts. The sill plate is recessed in the wet concrete when it was built, so it, it won't slide laterally. But should a, oh, I don't know, tornado come through, it would literally lift it right off the structure if it could create the overturning force of the structure's weight itself. So there are costs to tether the building to the foundation. Our code, and this is not a knock on us as a city, but our code is expensive. So just to do the building TI inside, coming up to standard as close there to outside is about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We didn't expect to replace the siding. Fair, fair enough, some of it would have had to have been replaced anyway. But differentiation materials and those types of things, those are the preliminary costs. We did include some site improvements for access. But you can see here, we'll have to have a concrete accessway from the right of way. And then per the code, a concrete pathway on the adjacent frontage of the structure for the main access. Good news, everything looks encouraging as far as space management. Currently, our consultant is looking for some cost savings. This will accommodate the building department, the engineering department, the planning department with flexibility moving forward. Because we are out of space, not only here, but also at City Hall. And we're in the middle of quite a, a project and a process. So with that said, again, I'll forward this around. These are some of the highlighted costs in yellow that were obviously more than we thought. One of the items that is in here is we did mathematically trigger sprinklers, but after recalking some things, we, we didn't, that's a five thousand square foot or a use type. Our use doesn't trigger and we are under five thousand square feet now. So thirty thousand dollars for fire protection. I think the committee was like, hey, you know, probably not a bad idea, no matter what we do. It's, it's cheap insurance. So regardless of how we do or don't move forward, we're, we're right around the two million dollar mark at this time. We have seven hundred and sixty, I believe, thousand in grants from the state. One of my windows just hid behind a window, so I'm, there we go, flying a little blind. So yes, seven, seven and change from the state. We had six hundred and sixty that were bond proceeds we have to spend. And I'm pretty sure Dana will confirm it's by the end of this year. We have a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar design contract. And I wanted to bring it forward because we obviously have decisions to make. And I want to make sure you all were in the know as that is current status. You know, committee had questions, we discussed it, you know, I really don't think we have a lot of options. The approach is, the mayor and I have talked, like, we will try to see if there's any way to increase our grant share from, from the state, is a direct line appropriation. Maybe somebody's already said they're not going to use it, maybe somebody hasn't, but we will certainly ask. I know confirming what Dana had, our REIT funds are over four million dollars in available resources not spoken for, not that that's a blank check by any means, but it is an option. So there, there you have it.
Director, Director Lenishewski, I do want to just set realistic expectations with council is the money that we receive from the legislature was a direct appropriation. And it is, takes an act of the legislature to change that direct appropriation. So, and this is supposed to be spent by the end of the biennium. So any going back to the legislature is going to be for new money, not for money that we've already been awarded.
And the biennium, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, for the state is middle of the year, not beginning of the year. So we're, we're a year and a half in, right? Or we're a half a year in, so we only have a year and a half left.
Correct.
A year left because it's July, sorry.
Councilmember Rysikson?
When you say spent, is it appropriated or actually spent?
It has been appropriated in grant agreement signs, so we have a legal obligation to spend it by us and do the project by a certain date.
As long as it's on contracts, it's, it's a legal obligation.
Correct. Well, actually, no. And Director Lenishewski could clarify, I believe we actually, it's not just on contract. I believe we have to have it built. Is, correct me, please, if I'm misremembering the contract.
I, I did not double check before the meeting, but yeah, we can double check.
Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions I'll start with. Does the two million dollars include the amount we are spending on design?
No, it includes some further soft costs, but not current design.
Okay. Second thing I wanted to just kind of remind everyone, this project, I believe, started out as a six hundred thousand dollar budget request. And I feel like a broken record, I'm not trying to blame anyone, but I, but I do think this is another illustration of where we incrementally make a decision. And here we are, I mean, I don't know how much the design, I mean, we're almost quadruple the original estimate. And when you look at that, you think, wow, when we gave an approval to move forward on this, what have we done something different? I don't know. I, it's, it's concerning when I see, when I see such a huge, you know, magnitude of increase in a budget for a capital project. I mean, it, it just, I'm, I'm on the verge of falling out of my chair. I'll just say that. It's a lot. So I, I hope this building and the configuration we are spending two point some million dollars on is something that we need and will use for quite some time because that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I think one of the alternatives to consider was, well, first thing, making sure ARC was on board with continuing to move forward. And then for, for Corey's sake, right, we, we are in several different stages of contracted work. We have a master plan for facilities the city's never had, so that's in process. And then you have a remodel at the police station and then a remodel here at the office of the treatment plant. So that's kind of that, but lost my train of thought. That's what happens on a Tuesday at, in the evening. What you're reporting in, Councilmember Naplin, was time and investment?
I was, I was generally whining, Steve, and I, it's okay, you don't need.
Yeah, no, I had, I had some kind of point, but
Long-term use.
The long-term use, yes, thanks. See, we did practice. We need space, no matter what our plan moving forward is for a congregated building, call it whatever, wherever, that's five to ten years, you know, we have to have something as a city to function out of. This parcel will always be ours, so our, ARC supports continue to move forward with this piece in this project. I want to make sure that was clear. But I did look at, you know, the alternative is to rent something in town. Let's say we just didn't want to enhance the space, we fill the spaces we have it, and we just go rent some other ancillary buildings, you know, as we move forward. That's possible, dollar seventy-five to two dollars a foot with triple net, and there's not a lot available, so that's kind of the, the other downfall in town. So I think even our newest council members mentioned not having space in town for, for kind of new, new things, so. Yes, it's tough and, and I, I hope we break the cycle. And I think this is one out of a handful of recent projects that may have broken the cycle on where we started versus where we are. But the other projects that we have moving forward capitally that aren't as squishy as remodels are all at or under their budget, so that's the good news. And yes, Councilmember Naplin, I'm sure you fell out of your chair, but just remember, I'm the one who had to tell you and, you know, not picking on you per se, but you're the one we angle most our topics of dollars to, so there you go.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, just, just a few comments on this. Many, many of these increases came as a surprise, right? They couldn't be foreseen, some of the basic lackings of that particular building weren't known ahead of time. And that contributed a significant amount, amount of cost. Inflation also was a contributing factor to this in addition to what Steve already listed in those. And my final comment is none, none, none of these increases are really discretionary. They're all basic safety requirements or required by, by regulations or by code. So we really don't have a choice here. And this is a long-term facility, no doubt, since it's, you know, you know, part or adjacent to our wastewater treatment plant because of where it's situated at. That building is going to be used, you know, in my mind, that's a forever building as far as being part, part of the city. It's not, it's not a limited lifetime type, type facility. So, so yeah, but I think we're really in a position where we have to make the investment and move forward.
Councilmember or Mayor Portman McHenry?
Yeah, Director, I just had a question about the open work area idea. So there's just, I know there's like still going to be conference room and there's that one focus, quiet type room. I was just curious, have you kind of polled your employees and tried to figure out, you know, are there going to be a lot of conflicts with those virtual meetings? Like, is one focus room enough? Or I wasn't sure how that worked or, because I just know from experience with my spouse working in an area that focus rooms are always booked up and it's just tough in, with the open work plan. So I was just curious what, you know, your thoughts were around all that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think that's as hard of a sell to staff as the fact that like no walls. So it is a, a different style of atmosphere and you can kind of see, it's, I know it's hard for some folks to visualize, but right, right now, you know, this whole portion is garage, right? So it's still quite open. There is a secondary staircase that's required for exiting purposes based on two floors and size and distance to, to egress and ingress. So that's, that's that, you know, directors and the managers have offices. There's a conference room on the main floor, there's a conference room on the second floor as well as the quiet room. You know, we've got other, other spaces. So all in all, you know, a person in this area and a person in this area sure, surely can be on meetings opposite each other and not be very distracting. If all the cubes are full, it certainly can get loud. You know, so nothing's perfect, but I think our, our consultant's attempt at making enough space, providing, you know, some of the interior improvements that, that can help with that, with material selection, you know, it's not hardwood everywhere, you, you, you put in carpets, so things like that, just to tone it down. I think we have a good number and yeah, we're all working in a different, you know, style, so I don't know, it's been talked about, it's not perfect. So yeah, but I think it's great. And they are, we, we, you know, when this came up, obviously we had a meeting. We stopped work on this, they're obviously still plowing forward on the city master plan. Obviously, you know, wanted to bring it forward, make sure everybody's in the know, knows where we are, knows where we're going. They're stopping work, they are looking at some things just on cost to see what either A is off or B can be refined or C is, can they do something a little different with material selection? So, you know, we are adjacent to the highways, so buffering that east wall with insulation over and above the standard and wall, their window thicknesses that again, remove as much noise as possible. But yeah, there's not a lot of frills even in this as it exists, so. Councilmember Naplin, hand it up.
No. Any other council members? Okay, I would just like to, to point out and acknowledge that we are in this situation because of an incremental approach. When I took office as mayor five years ago, I proposed in the budget major improvements to our buildings and moving forward with the new city hall. Five years before that, this city was well aware that we needed a new city hall in the very near future to house existing and future employees. So it is not unexpected at all that not taking action has resulted in significantly increased costs to house our employees. Three years ago, in order to house employees, as somebody who is working full-time as the city's mayor, I gave up my office in city hall for staff. During the pandemic, we removed our city hall conference room for staff. We do not have places today to house staff that if we had taken, if the city had taken action five years ago, we very well may have a facility built in the next two years and may not have needed to do this significant remodel. I also want to make sure to note for the public as well that Mr. Lenishewski and I worked very hard at bringing over eight hundred thousand dollars in direct appropriations from the legislature to fund this project to reduce the burden to our taxpayers to support our employees. Our number one job here is to make sure our employees have a place to work so that they can provide services to our communities. And so, yes, this project is more expensive. But because we didn't move forward as a city when it was proposed five years ago, is why we're, we're at today. We could have done a government facilities analysis in coordination with planning and moving forward with the city hall and the building that we need to house folks for the future. That was not the decision that council made. And that was not the recommendation of administration at that time. It's not right or wrong, but it does have impact and consequences. And that is part of what we're seeing with this increased cost and timeline with these buildings. So I hope this is also a lesson learned that sometimes taking a leap of faith when the professionals come forward and make recommendations, even though it's scary, is the right thing to do for the community for the long run. And just consider that as we take on other capital projects. Third Avenue is another example of an incremental approach that was not what administration had recommended. And we're now looking at significant more costs just in design than that alone as well. Those are real dollars that we could be putting to other projects or necessary staffing. So it's not a criticism, it's just I want to make sure that folks are acknowledged and recognize that history. So, um, it's not a criticism. It's just, I want to make sure that folks are acknowledged and recognize that history. Um, as we move forward, because we have a lot of really big things that we have to get done. And if we do head into recession, we can't be afraid to move forward and, and make sure that our city runs and operates as best as it can. Um, so I just want to share that, um, perspective. And, um, for anybody that wasn't around during those times and the time before the last five years and wants some history, please feel free to reach out to me because there's a lot more to it, um, than can be, you know, just shared in this forum. Um, that I'm happy to discuss with folks and I know that, uh, Mr. Lenishewski would be as well. Um.
Question.
Councilmember Lovett, yes.
When is the, when does the funding expire that's already tied up for that project? Or does it, does it expire?
It does expire.
So when is it, when's the kill date on that?
Yeah, I'll verify per the contract, but I, I am fairly certain it is expended prior to, and I believe it's the end of June because the biennium for the state starts July one. Is that right, Mayor? Yeah, so that amount has to be spent by next summer and then the city has its own different situation. Um. Uh, I guess the city had some bond proceeds. They didn't use them all. So they'd have to be expended on other items by the end of this year. And I think Dana, your finance director can confirm that if yes or no, or.
Yeah, so the, the, the grant contract does expire, um, mid twenty twenty-three. And if the funds are not expended, then they automatically get re-reparated. But there's not a guarantee that the legislature will approve them again. So anything. And then, um, for the bond proceeds, we, uh, we have a resolution that does say that the bond proceeds can be used on the, um, the wastewater treatment plant or the, the public works wastewater treatment plant building. And the approximate amount that we have budgeted for that is, um, a hundred and twenty thousand. Bond proceeds. And then anything, if there are any of our other projects that have been, that have bond proceeds allocated to them that are not completed by the end of this year, we could use the bond, those bond proceeds that were allocated for the project as well.
And what's the difference between the, uh, what we have currently sort of say in the kitty versus what's the actual total bill? I, I was doing like rough math. It's like, we're like five hundred thousand short or six hundred thousand short. Is that right?
I mean, it's a little complicated to be fair. Yes, those are the dollars that you do see that are eligible. But when we budgeted this originally, you, you know, the, the intent was like council member Napoli said, I think it was six sixty.
Yeah.
That was city money. And then, you know, like the mayor said, then we, if we, and we earned the state money. So we didn't just stack it, right? We kind of put the state money in and put the other money back, um, in, in that approach. So to your point, yes, seven hundred plus six hundred is about one point three. If you're looking for two hundred, uh, and some change there, you're at five to seven hundred. Yes. But it's not all allocated that way and obviously there's reasoning for that, but.
Sure. Patchwork. Okay. That answers.
Thank you. All right. We have, next up is the reschedule. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Napoli?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw this out there real quick. I, I've heard a couple of different council members, uh, I believe, say something about, do we use ARPA money and try to get it out the door? Um, on, you know, things that we can, we're going to do anyway, and it would be a good way to use the money and not have to feel rushed. Is this something that we would consider? It's a one-time cost? Is it eligible for ARPA? Is it a way to utilize that money and get it off of, you know, the books? I just wanted to throw that out there because I've been hearing that from other council members.
Absolutely. Um, and Director Lenishewski and I've talked about that quite a bit. Um, as I know, I've talked to Councilmember Riggs and then I think Mayor Portem McHenry as well. Um, and I think that we would all, uh, at least on the administrative side, we would support that as, um, and just like, uh, Director Mason said earlier, um, putting towards, uh, salaries, et cetera, um, would be probably the cleanest and simplest way to expend the funds and, and use our general fund dollars for other projects. All right. Thank you. Great question, council member. Um, so next up we have, uh, for discussion, rescheduling of our August second, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting. Um, unfortunately, national night out falls on the first Tuesday of August every year. Um, and, uh, so we want to see if folks are minimal to either having the meeting on Monday night or Wednesday night. Um, so that we can all attend the neighborhood events. Is there anyone that that doesn't work for at this point?
No, I was more concerned if you were going to move it out a week because I would be gone. But, but within, you know, shifting it one way or the other works fine for me.
Okay.
So the first or the third?
Yes. Um, so for our staff, uh, preference, is it easier Monday or Wednesday? If it works for everyone else.
I think it's six, one of half dozen of the other.
Actually, you know what? I would suggest Monday because of summer stage. Um, okay. So we have consensus to move the meeting to Monday, the first? Great. Thank you all. All right.
Would be the same.
Correct. We'd start everything the same time, just a day early. Um, all right. We'll move on to special presentations. First up is Troy Davis, our senior planner, developing permitting code amendments in the regulatory framework.
Oh, I'm gonna need to promote Troy to, um, you'll see.
All right. Looks like I've been promoted. Thank you. Um, all right. Let me share my screen here for you. And just for the record, um, I'm Troy Davis. I'm the senior planner here at the city of Duval. And tonight I wanted to do a little bit of a primer to go over some code amendment work that we, uh, started working on earlier this year, if not late last year. Uh, just to kind of get everybody up, up to speed and on the same page of, of where we're coming from. Um, before we move, uh, those draft code amendments, uh, forward for you guys to review. So a little bit of background information, uh, Duval is a code city, which basically means we have broad authority in all matters of local concern, uh, you know, that aren't prohibited by the state comp- constitution or reserved, um, by, by the state. Uh, and so title thirty-five A in the revised code of Washington is what provides us authorization to be an optional municipal code city. Uh, we have chosen to be a code city and so our municipal code consists of eleven titles. And so what that means is I just wanted to break that down a little bit for you. Um, but a title, it's a broad category under which ordinances on a related subject are compiled. Uh, so for instance, in Duval municipal code, we have a title, um, that's entitled business regulations. And so within that, uh, the next subcategory of that topic, uh, for example, would be, license requirements, uh, for business licenses. And then under that chapter heading, uh, you would have specific regulations, uh, located in what are called sections. Uh, so each section is your, your specific code provision. Those live within chapters, chapters live within titles, uh, all based kind of on that subject. So if you just kind of think of it as a funnel, we're honing in down on the specific regulation in terms of organizing where that regulation lives. Um, there's also a more broad regulatory framework that governs, uh, our code regulations. Uh, you can see down in the green, we're kind of at the, what looks to be the bottom of the food chain. Um, but it's not quite as bad as it looks. So, uh, basically we have some other things, uh, legally speaking, in the works that kind of provide a framework for the type of regulations that we can, we can have as a city. So, uh, the first of course is ensuring that our regulations are compliant with federal and state laws. Uh, those Trump, uh, municipal code in terms of, uh, authority. Um, but kind of as a side note, as you can see, we have some other, other bodies at work that kind of influence, uh, our code. Uh, so that can be, uh, federal court decisions, um, that can be state court, Supreme Court decisions. Um, decisions from the growth management hearings board or decisions from the shoreline hearings board. Um, so those, uh, X, what I'd call kind of external, um, indirect, I don't know what the best word is, but it was in, indirect legislative, um, mechanisms also influence, um, code. So for instance, if the Supreme Court ruled on a case regarding sign, you know, sign regulations, commercial sign regulations, um, we would need to ensure that our, you know, code regulations for signs wasn't in conflict with that ruling. Um, same with kind of the growth management board. Um, you know, if they issue a, a decision on an appeal or a case, you know, we would want to look at our code regulations to make sure that we would be, you know, in compliance with what the growth management hearings board ruled. Uh, same with shoreline. Uh, and so with, with those kind of external forces, you know, we, we always take a look at our code to see how we're, we're complying with, with those issues and rulings. So just as an FYI, the growth management hearings board, they operate as a, an appeal body, basically for anyone who issues or files an appeal, uh, for local regulations, um, regarding development, uh, comprehensive plan policies. And the growth management hearings board reviews those appeals for, um, concurrence with an interpretation of the Growth Management Act. Um, so say for instance, the growth management board heard a case, you know, a city zoned uh, land within their jurisdiction of, of one dwelling unit per acre. And some watchdog group in the city or in the state said, hey, I don't think one unit per acre is consistent with the intent of the Growth Management Act. I'm going to appeal your city's legislative decision to enact that zoning. I would go to the growth management hearings board and they would decide, you know, is one dwelling unit per acre consistent with Growth Management Act? And, um, if they ruled no, then other cities, you know, that had that same zoning of one dwelling in a break would probably want to go back and reevaluate, um, their regulations to make sure that they are, are consistent with the intent of the Growth Management Act. And then the shoreline scenes, hearings board, um, that's to address appeals of, of municipal decisions regarding permits and decisions. Um, obviously development that occurs along shorelines is more heavily regulated and guarded and, and can be more controversial than traditional, uh, land use decisions. And then one other factor that we have guiding our municipal code, and this one is a, is a big one, of course, uh, but it's our comprehensive plan. So our comprehensive plan acts as a policy document that lays the foundation, um, for many of our municipal regulations, particularly in, in relation to, um, development. Uh, so just to dive a little bit into our municipal code here, um, it consists of forty-four chapters. So title fourteen, which is our unified development regulations, that's the chapter that we in planning utilize the most here in the city because this, this title addresses, you know, most things in relation to, sorry, excuse me. In relation to development and permitting. Um, so this is, this is the chapter that the planning department works out of, of the most. Uh, so this title was established in nineteen ninety-five and then it was superseded by titles eleven and twelve. It's just a little unimportant FYI. Um, our last major code overhaul occurred back in two thousand and seven, following the adoption of the city's two, uh, twenty oh-six comprehensive plan. And, and that's very typical. So after we do a periodic update of our comprehensive plan, um, in an, in an ideal situation, you know, if, if resources allow, um, cities also update their, um, corresponding code regulations. Um, because it's our, it's our code regulations that are going to really implement our comprehensive plan, right? So we want to make sure that, um, our regulations are, are doing the job that they're supposed to be doing based on what we say in our comprehensive plan. So this past update was in twenty fifteen and the update of the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, we did not do a major overhaul of our code regulations. Um, and again, it all comes down to funding and resources, uh, and that sort of thing, which we didn't have at the time. Um, but our hope is moving forward with our next period, periodic update of our comprehensive plan to also go in and, and do that major overhaul so that we're, um, up to speed and up to date with our current comprehensive plan. And since two thousand and seventy, you know, we've done minor amendments and we've even actually done what I would call some semi-major amendments where we've gone through and pretty much revised, you know, an entire chapter. Um, our, our, for those that have been on the council for a while, you know, we've seen our tree protection ordinance got a major overhaul a few years ago. Uh, and same with our sensitive area regulations, but generally speaking, they've been relatively, uh, minor. So to go over the code amendment process, uh, there is a process, that process is spelled out in chapter fourteen oh-eight. Um, and a little bit of fourteen eighty, but mostly in fourteen oh-eight. So in fourteen oh-eight text amendments are processed, uh, processes type six amendments, um, which basically means it's a legislative decision. Um, so the city council, uh, you guys are the decision makers on what that code language is at the end of the day. It's not something that staff implements on our own. It's not administrative. It's, it's legislative. Uh, so when we, uh, propose a code amendment as staff, as planning staff, we work with the land use committee, we work with the planning commission and we work with the city council. And we develop drafts, uh, we get input along all three stages, uh, of the, of the process. Uh, until we can develop a, a, a basic draft, um, you know, that we're basically good with. Um, once we get to that point, we send that draft to, uh, the state department of commerce for a review. And that's a state law requirement and they review code, uh, requirements to ensure that we're not in conflict with any state, uh, regulations. Kind of keeps an eye on things, right? So a city doesn't go rogue and start adopting policies that conflict with state requirements. So it's just basically a, a check and balance at that point. And then, once we do that, we go through the state environmental, um, policy act process. Um, and that's where we evaluate our proposed, um, code language for impacts to the environment. Um, generally code language doesn't have a direct impact, uh, but it can. Um, it's usually project specific items that can have a more direct impact. But nevertheless, we always want to review our policies for the impact that they have, you know, to the general environment. Um, so that we're not creating a situation where we end up with an undesirable built environment. Uh, so that, that's another kind of checkpoint in the process. And then, um, we also hold public hearings with the, uh, planning commission and city council. And that's to ensure that we are getting some public buy-in and public comment. Oftentimes we don't get comments, um, but sometimes we do. And it's really important, um, you know, to get that feedback and that input. Uh, because at the end of the day, we need a code, you know, code regulations that are supported by, you know, the, the, the residents of the city and, and our city council. So that's an important step in the process. So, once we kind of get through all those items, um, the city council makes a final decision on the code amendments. Uh, those amendments, um, are later codified and put into our municipal code. Uh, they become effective essentially five days, uh, after adoption or publication in the city's official newspaper, I should say. So that's kind of the quick and dirty on how we get, get through a code amendment. Um, and now diving a little bit more specifically onto what we want to work on in the planning department is specifically two chapters that we want to, to touch base on. The first one, um, coincidentally is, uh, chapter fourteen oh-eight, the permitting process. So, uh, that's one of them. And then the other one is regarding the comprehensive plan amendment, uh, process as well. So we want to take a look at those a little bit more deeply and, and dive into those corrections. Uh, so with regards to fourteen. So with regards to fourteen oh eight. So this chapter spells out everything that we've got to do to process a permit, all the steps from A to Z. There's a whole bunch, there's a handful of state requirements that we've got to meet, like a notice of application. You know, that we send to surrounding property owners. Final decisions on on permits, that sort of thing. So that this chapter tells. Tells me as a planner what steps I have to take when a when an applicant submits an application for new development. And these steps are really important for city staff to follow. If a city outlines a process, you know, for processing. Permits and we don't meet those city and state regulations. It can usually put us in a bit of trouble. So usually. Landies permits, if they're ever appealed, they're usually always lost due to a technicality. Not really the issue at hand. And it's that's where if I if I make a mistake somewhere in the review process. Then then that kind of, you know, puts us at risk. So. What we want to do with this chapter is we really want to clarify the process. Just working with this chapter, you know, in the time that Laura and I have, we've found, you know, a number of kind of little. Things here and there that don't quite add up and that can cause us some problems. So we really want to kind of work through the language and massage it and. And get the process spelled out in a much more clearer format. One of the things that that involves is adding some additional permit types. So one of the issues that we've noticed is we don't really have a minor site plan review. Permit process. So what that means is if a if a commercial building or a church or or whatever. Outside of a a single family residential unit wants to add on to their house, they've got to go through a type three. Quasi judicial. Permit process, which includes a public hearing and a and a final decision by the hearing examiner. So. When you think of like a large church building, like the Catholic Church in town, doing a little two hundred square foot addition and having to go through. The whole public hearing process just to add on, you know, a couple hundred square feet. That may, you know, what we've. We've seen seems a bit onerous of a of a process. It can also be a little bit of an economic hindrance too. So what we want to do is make sure that these minor things can go through a more simpler process. To help, you know, free up staff time as well and to make it easier on the applicant. One of the other major issues too that we need to address in this code update is vesting, the topic of vesting. So right now, currently, really the only application types that vest are. Plat applications. So that's an application for a new subdivision. Those vests, but essentially, as as the state state is concerned. Unless a city has a specific ordinance granting vesting rights. Then then nothing else vests. So that means if I submitted a commercial application for site plan review and. City, the city was in the middle of reviewing that application and the city changed the regulations while that application was active. That applicant would have to go back and revise their plans to meet. You know, the the recently adopted code language. And so that that's a big topic, you know, for the city to consider and for the city council to consider and what they determine is fair and. And how they want to see that move forward. But that's a a big issue that we're a big item that we're missing from our. Our code. And then another one that we've kind of noticed is inactive permits. So right now. And applicants can submit an application. We can deem it complete, we can review it and we can send comments back to the applicant and say, hey. You've got this laundry list of items that you need to correct on your project in order to meet city regulations. And the applicant could say, okay, and they could just sit on it. For months and months and months and months and months. You know, before they resubmit. And so we kind of want to work out that work so that when we send an applicant review comments, they've got X amount of days. To get those corrections back in so that we can keep their permit moving. We've had a few permits here, just in the time I've been with the city where the turnaround time from the applicant has been super slow. You know, so we've had, you know, the their respective application and review for a very long time. And so we kind of want to take a look at that and how we can can avoid that in the future. So why now, the Kairos, I guess, is. Hey, we're in a sewer moratorium. So now's an excellent time to take a look at our. You know, regulations where we have some issues and and get those changes made before we lift that and new applications come in. That's also to address some council concerns and department concerns, which I just reviewed. Chapter fourteen seventy two is our comprehensive plan amendment procedure. So comprehensive plan amendments. Follow a little bit different amendment procedure, which is why the regulations live in a different chapter. There's just different requirements than a typical permit. So we've found that the language in our chapter fourteen oh two is pretty dated. I think most of it's still back from two thousand and seven. And there's just a lot of ambiguity in the code language. So what we want to do is 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 clarify that, get the process more specified. And get things a little bit more orderly so that we can process those amendments in a more orderly. Fashion. We also want to take a look at addressing periodic updates versus annual updates. And how we how we process that. So obviously, our periodic updates of our comprehensive plan are really big. And so the process of a of a major overhaul of our comprehensive plan is going to be different than a smaller annual, you know, tiny amendment. So we want to look at how we we do those, you know, and perhaps do them differently so that we can meet state requirements and. And engage with the public at an appropriate level. So again, the why now, it's the same sewer moratorium, upcoming periodic update in twenty twenty three, I believe, or twenty twenty four. So we got that that looming. So we like to kind of get that wrapped up. That is just again, everything just kind of in a primer, real basic level. As we move forward, you'll see us bring forth drafts and have further discussions on the specific code amendments that we're proposing. That is all I have for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, that tells us it was a very thorough presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next special presentation, Big Rock Sports Park Phase Two Summary and Next Steps with Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening again, everyone. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works, Mayor and Council, citizens and staff remaining. Good news here, better than the last discussion. Regular business moving forward. So if you recall, we we did purchase the piece of land that is the mirror image to the. Big Rock Ball Field. I am talking and trying to get this thing to present as fast as I can here. Two years ago, we we worked with Little League and they were helpful in obtaining a grant for twenty five thousand dollars to. Get moving forward on pre-planning, preliminary design layout of some features for the field itself. You should go see my slides now, yes? So with that said, that twenty five thousand dollar phase is complete. The city did. Engage the entire community. We had a very robust community survey response. We have tried with our consultant to grab as many elements as possible. We were awarded the next phase, which would be going to full design. We were awarded a hundred thousand dollars from King County Youth Sports. To participate in our, at that time, three hundred thousand dollar estimated design cost. Turn my fan off. So we are, we did talk about this at committee, staff in general, and the committee are excited to move forward towards full design. Right now, Bruce D's and Associates did provide us with two expanses, two expansion approaches I will share. One is concept A, soft skate features and incorporating the wetland. And more of a full build out sports feature and filling the wetland. Again, filling the wetland is not necessarily a decision that we get to make carte blanche. There's a hearing process involved and. Of course, some other items that are evaluated on. The site itself and and kind of professional assessments and again, hearing examiner process. So. With that said, the concept A. Incorporates. The list of things here on the side. So you've got. You know, new field turf lighting, they recommend changing out field three. Regardless of any orientation discussion, for those who know that orientation of the existing field three, which is here is currently grassed. They do recommend that become synthetic field turf with lighting. The alignment of this is problematic certain times of the day. So again, that hasn't been addressed and any remedies discussed. But they looked at the usability of the site. The new ball field on the backside, a combination approach maximizing the use. Ball field softball, baseball softball field with backstops dugout fence and lighting, multi-use adding soccer. Or lacrosse or football parking lot, you know, a hundred plus new spaces. Expanding the playground which exists here, kind of a central plaza. Trails, rest stops, picnic shelters, more trailheads, gathering staging area, a little pump track. Concrete sidewalks, crossings, new vehicular access point off Big Rock. Stream protection and buffer enhancements, you know, keeping the wetland and the buffer. Forest preservation area, the the outside eastern edge is fairly well wooded. With not only deciduous, but you know, lower growth. Trees, the back is also sectioned off to be kept, a lot of green back there and its adjacency to sensitive areas offsite. So that's kind of the concept A approach. Concept B keeps the majority of the same, except for you can see the the wetland on the site would be filled. Maximizing that use and then providing, you know. Not as many of the smaller features, but certainly the the multiple fields as well as other gathering spaces. You might ask what concept A might cost. So current project estimate, which again is very rough at preliminary level. Four point eight million in project costs, thirty two percent soft costs on top for six point three million dollars. Field B maximizing the site for concept B, six point three million plus two million in soft costs for about eight point three. A little bit of à la carte, there is space to fill in things. And I know we had important. Types of uses throughout our survey responses. So pump track splash pad. Some sport court climbing wall, additional restroom. So. Those items are provided in cost just for understanding what those elements may or may not be. So that's a lot. Like I said, I will send this afterwards. We're very pleased with Bruce D's and Associates' work. Little League's been helpful. We we have emailed the leagues on, you know, their expectations. Anecdotally, they're they're increasing their enrollment in Duval next year. We're already pre-scheduling the soccer. Not only the rec, but the premier clubs and of course, baseball had, I I think. A really great year. Their enrollment was was really big this year. They've actually increased their use on field one for. Baseball with some of the cut ins and then, of course, the tournament that was held here was great. So. All in all, a lot to celebrate. I don't think it's a surprise that there's costs to build a new park. Since we haven't started yet, but those are fun discussions to have. Timeline wise, we would love to move forward with getting, you know, the design underway. So next steps would be going back through how we procured Bruce D's. Double checking if we did or didn't need to redo the the assessment and then trying to move forward to a contract. The design is low threes, and then if you go to the full build out with the concept B, it's over four hundred thousand per design. So that's the site. I don't know if anybody from committee has any comments to add, but. Nothing too surprising, just.
I mean, we we did spend a fair amount of meetings sort of discussing this. I I think. And just sort of share my point of view. This is obviously, there's a financial component. There are some unknowns in terms of. Build out. And just even moving forward with the design. I I think one of the, just to sort of share my personal perspective a little bit, this has been. You know, a journey acquiring the original land. There was an opportunity to acquire the land that was passed on. It sort of came back into. You know, a second bite at the apple, the the council made a decision. To acquire the land. I've sort of shifted. I I'm very much in terms of particularly having been involved in the. The native growth and sort of tree retention policy discussions on planning committee. Very cognizant of the the green space that we have in the city and and how that sort of feeds into the overall. Community and value as well as the results of the survey that went out in terms of what people want. That said, you know, this for me is really an opportunity. You know, we we have a high degree of of sport involvement. Capacity has always been an issue and. As Director Lenishewski indicated, it's never, there's never a shortage of interest in terms of using those fields. We've discussed. Potential economic opportunities in terms of tournaments. So, you know, I've I've just. Moved my position a little bit. I think it's obviously something to explore in terms of. What would be required to to fill those wetlands if in fact we decided to do that, where that fits in the process and staging, but. I I I'm of the mind that we may never get an opportunity to build out in terms of a capacity perspective from a field. And that yet there's still an opportunity to address some of the the soft spaces on the periphery. I'd love to sort of explore that, but I don't think we'll we'll fully know that until we start to move forward with the design process. So. Again, no decision today, just but just sharing my perspective from an opportunity cost is. Is I I think there's some value in terms of moving forward with. Maximizing the field space and because this may be the only time that we we get to do that in terms of as the community continues to grow.
Thank you, Councilmember Mercer. Councilmember Isaacson and then Schaefer.
Steve, is there a possibility, I mean, the wetland, I know we talked about this before, that it's just it's a matter of going to hires kind of approval when we follow that process. Is there a way to? Maybe start with that backfield, maybe in parallel to figure out where to get approval to fill that wetland. And if we don't continue with plan A. You know, I mean, can those things happen in parallel instead of waiting for a higher level decision on the wetland?
Yeah, I think. I would like. Director Thomas to weigh in on that. We'll we'll put her on the spot. Since the permit process for development starts with the planning group, so maybe she can shed some light on what that might look like in a sense.
Yeah, I, you know, I definitely hear what our community needs are. It's definitely, you know, some tree retention, natural areas. But also the need for additional sports facilities and the economic development that that can bring. A wetland fill process can't be done speculatively. It has to be done as part of a permit processing. So that's kind of probably not the best news that you want to hear, but what we could do. Is go through an early robust process with our consultant under our existing regulations and at least. Do we have a good chance of making this work so that we have a better. You know, so there's just an opportunity so that we know, close the door, open the door and that there's an expectation that. Does that help, Steve?
I think so, yeah.
Councilmember Schaefer and then Mayor Parton.
Yeah, I was just going to reinforce some of the things that Councilmember Mercer said. This may be our final opportunity. For really sports field build out here in Duval. We don't have any other prospective land at the moment. Potentially, we could acquire some, but right now, there there really isn't any. And both Ron and Laura have mentioned economic benefit. Or Councilmember Lovett's sake. You know, the potential here is is significant. In one of the big advantages, something like this is it attracts out of town business to Duval. People come in obviously for the sports, but they go out to eat. People come in obviously for the sports, but they go out to eat, shop, whatever, bring in out of town money. Benefit the city economically without growth, which is a big deal in in my mind. So lots of reasons that this this is a good idea and even with the sacrifice of that of those wetlands. I'm still in favor of the full full build out.
Thank you. Mayor Parton McHenry. Yeah, so I had a couple of questions if that's okay. I, when I think back to the survey that we sent out to the community, it seemed like most were in favor of that moderated approach. And when I look at these two options, I see A is like the moderate approach and B is the full build out. And I don't know if maybe I'm just misreading that. I'm not gonna lose sleep over if it gets filled, just so you guys know, I could live with either option. But I was curious because it was something that I had brought up before about hopefully this one survey out to the community was not the only attempt. It, you know, so as we narrow in on a more specific vision for that park expansion, Director, I was just wondering, do you have a timeline in mind? Like, is this the point where you reach back out to the community and say, what do you guys think between A or B? Or and then maybe I'll just lay all my questions on you or you can stop. I'll pause and let you finish that one.
Tough question. You can always ask again. But I think yeah, I don't know. Maybe before we answer those level of questions, because I think that's next step, maybe Councilmember Napolin would like to chip in. Then I have a better flavor. I've got like
Well, let's, Mayor, Mayor Parton McHenry, reframe the question.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm asking is if not a survey, maybe some kind of virtual open house or something just to or just to put it out there and say, if you have thoughts on that, you know, just some kind of public outreach. I don't really care particularly what that looks like. And I I get, I just wanna make sure, because so often people are like, they wanna give their feedback, but it seems to always be too late or not the right time. You know, because we start going down this funnel. So I just wanna make sure what are our pre-planned checkpoints with the community. Because I do recall like A seems a bit more like the moderate approach that people were, you know, where we preserve a bit of the environment. And that being said, though, parallel to this, I understand that this site specifically may be the best for full sports build out. And so if that's the case, some of those really awesome features, where are other parks that we could plug that in? And then the last thing I'll throw out, sorry, is, you know, I would really like to continue reaching out to King County and pressuring them a bit to help us look for land they could purchase, can we partner? But also I never forget about Duval Park down on Highway two oh three. Could we please make that field playable? Anyways, I'll stop there.
Councilmember Napolin.
Yeah, Councilmember McHenry said a lot of the things that I I also feel. It it's a common theme where people give input to the, you know, kind of at the hopefully front end. And then what ends up happening, they're like, wait a sec, that really wasn't, you know, exactly what I intended, but by then it's too late to to give any additional feedback. So, yeah, even if if it wasn't another survey, that'd be fine, at least to say, hey, we're gonna discuss it at our next council meeting. At least put out some of the documents so people could have a chance to provide feedback. I don't know. Specific feedback about the design options. A little concerned that the second field is not a multi-use field, it's a single use field. Even though technically the soccer field that's currently there is somewhat able to use for multi-use. I think everyone who's been there and seen baseball played on that soccer field would know that's really not an ideal scenario. So it's not, that field really isn't the most multi-use, that back soccer field that we currently have. And so to have another fully dedicated soccer field seems a little bit unusual when we have very limited space to have a no field that can't also be used for baseball. And, you know, if we're gonna use that much of the land, I mean, that there's there's the double diamond where you have a giant soccer field and baseball fields that either diagonal, which is what they have up at Redmond Ridge. I don't know if anyone's been up there at that park, but that's their configuration. It it honestly works really great. That's my feedback in regard to the configuration. I I also agree with Councilmember McHenry that it it did feel like the community saw great value in preserving open space and having some balance in not just, you know, paving it all over. Like if you go up to Big Rock now, there's no, almost no trees on the site. It's pavement, it's turf, it's parking. And I feel like if we do both fields on the other site, we're having a mirror image of kind of a similar situation where there's a lot of artificial turf, pavement, not a lot of trees. I I don't know if that's exactly what the community wanted based on the feedback I saw. And my suggestion, the last time this came up was, I do think we should consider buying an adjacent piece of property. There's some constrained properties nearby that, you know, potentially aren't great for building homes on. But would be excellent pieces of property for open park space to just give a little elbow room to that park to enhance its usability for a variety of residents, not just sports people. I I go to a lot of different parks and my favorite parks to go to are ones that have that balance. They they might have a, you know, a really strong emphasis on the sports fields. But for the other people who are coming, the siblings, you know, it's it's a comfortable park environment. And I I just worry that if we don't buy adjacent land or somehow find a way to preserve some of the natural areas surrounding it, that we're just, you know, gonna be a a very highly developed sport complex. Which I, which I like the functionality of it, but sad about the the lack of natural areas, because that's really important to me. So, but I do know there's very limited flat land for fields. So it's, it's a tricky one, but conversations with King County, I think that they have money to invest in property acquisition. They've talked a lot about it. The levy that was passed several years ago, there's definitely money there. I really think that if we're gonna fill in a wetland, we should consider purchasing some adjacent property to transfer that, preserve space somewhere else.
Thank you, Councilmember Napolin. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. And first, before we move on, we are almost at nine thirty, so we need a motion to extend past nine thirty.
I move we extend past nine thirty.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Agenda Bill twenty-two dash fifty-five, resolution approving realist to find a plat for discussion. Director Lenishewski.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Lenishewski again, Council Mayor's staff. And I believe you have two more slides out of me and I will be quiet. Think that these buttons would do the same thing every time. Okay, Jennifer, you have a question already? Okay, real Vista. Again, this is a check in. Long, short, sixty-seven units, one city park, a long history, a development agreement. And then sewer and water recovery contracts. Those are gonna be incorporated in the final plat. They do not need to be separated as we kind of thought, based on time. The plat is set to expire in August, so we are moving swiftly, as is the developer, to get this project all wrapped up. Final documentation of a final plat, that is the segregation of the land in in the paper world meets and bounds. And then a lot of language on who is responsible for what, who has easements, who has rights and all that of the parcels that are segregated. A couple of the high level notes that we've had questions on slash just trying to make sure are crystal clear since there are so many spaces. The center part, I will slide back one slide, Track J, we call it. So this is northeast one forty-third place. This is two seventy-second to the east. Third Avenue is just to the west. So one forty-third has the new, a lot of subdivision on it. You may have may or may not have noticed, it was actually recently paved last week. So Track J is where there will become public land as well as some park elements. Trails, sport courts, playground, picnic shel- picnic area. There's restroom shelter and and access throughout the wetland through trail. So with that, that will become a city park and city property in whole, which is this line around the entire space outside of the lots. There's several layers to this and I tried to encapsulate as much as possible. And this is for Troy, who's probably gone by now, but alphabetical order, landscape strips. None of these are more important than others, just alphabetical order. Land state, landscape strips. The street, the curb, typically a landscape strip with a tree and grass or shrubs and then a sidewalk. So landscape strips along the roads are to be maintained by the HOA. It is in their CCNRs. We will incorporate it into this, which is Exhibit B, which the CCNRs are the conditions, covenants and restrictions of the plat, which are recorded. So that we're trying to memorialize who does what here, because there's a lot of kind of moving parts on how this whole thing landed. Storm drain vaults. So in this vicinity, you can see the shaded back area under this little hand claw. And this long park area over here, there's storm drain detention vaults under the ground. So the HOA will maintain those areas as well as their operational needs for the first two years. They go through the maintenance period, so that we have a two-year maintenance period upon final plat approval in the city Duval. They will then have an inspection. They will fix and repair any deficiencies that have been born through the first year, two years of operation. And then we will take them over in ownership in whole when they provide the repairs if necessary. After that, the city will maintain this green area, which is access and some grass around the playground area over here. Sport court and little picnic sitting area, as well as the park land over the space that is here adjacent to the eastern side of the wetland. Next step within Track J, the pink areas are the landscape planner bed areas and the sensitive area inside the fence adjacent to the trail and the trail itself. So the HOA or the building, the builder, for the first five years will ma- oh, I'm crossing it up. The the pink area will be maintained in perpetuity by the HOA inside Track J, which is the park space and the trail space. That has to do with sensitive area mitigations as well as some open space that is part of their plat, but yet part of the fringes of the wetland. The green area will become ours, as I make note. The blue areas, that is the sensitive areas by our definitions. That is owned by the city, but it will be operated for a five-year period by the HOA, including the pathway, the chip pathway. So that will be on them for the first five years and then they have their own, our sensitive area regulation has their own timelines, which are greater than the standard two. And then at that point, inspections and the the remedy and then handing over to the city for full operational consideration moving forward. That's a lot of stuff on sixty-seven units to digest. There are a lot of pieces of paper in the packet. There will be more coming. Everything in your packet as a final plat document is only the eight-page document, but there's a lot that go with it. That is still draft. We still have red lines to work through with the with the applicant. We do expect them to be prepared to come to the August second meeting. And they expect, if they get their their homework done, you know, staff recommendation for final plat. It is still quasi judicial here. It's not administrative, so that still comes to council for review and approval. Laura, is there anything I missed on that since Laura and I are both diligently thrust into the final plat process, which isn't normally the business we're in with Troy departing and Larissa being on maternity leave. We're, we're stuck doing what we used to do, so.
I would just, thanks Steve, I would just add that this final plat is the primary plat's actually set to expire before our second meeting in August. That's why we needed to reschedule the first meeting. And so it is a ginormous push for the applicant, but also for our staff as well. So Steve and I are stepping in for multiple reasons. One, because of staffing, but two is we're just trying to help everybody get this through.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Our first item of new business is Agenda Bill twenty-two dash sixty-four. Commercial development extension request for Duval Village. Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, do you see my presentation or my, okay, thank you. I was just checking because I'm on a different screen. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. I do see that there's a couple of members of the audience still. This evening, we're going to discuss the extension of commercial development application for parcel C one at Duval Village. And since we have new, a new council member and new council members, we'll just do a tiny bit of history. I will put my glasses on this time so I can read it. Just to give a little bit of history for Duval Village, you can see that this is a replica of the old Thayer barn that DFA is hoping to build on site on another commercial lot. And then you can see the renderings that were for the residential portion, which are built out by about fifty percent at this point. This project actually really did start well before two thousand fourteen. But it got re-engaged in two thousand fourteen with a memorandum 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 of understanding between Wes Scott, the city of Duval and DFA. We entered into a development agreement in two thousand fifteen with the three parties. The development agreement is getting towards the end of its life cycle. It expires in two thousand twenty-five. The primary plat was approved in two thousand fifteen by the Herring Examiner and final plat was achieved in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, we granted some permit extensions for DFA. Home construction began in two thousand twenty-one with new ownership. So Wes Scott at this point had has sold off all of its essentially assets within that development. A commercial development deferral was approved in twenty twenty-one with Wes Scott. They pretty much sold that property right after that. And JSGP Ventures requested an additional year to submit a land use permit. And so you can see, I did a little snapshot of an aerial, so this is the residential portion here up on the north sector. And then also towards the west and then south, you can see there is the parking lot right here that is a shared asset, but the city owns it. And then this right here is the commercial parcel. You can see it a little bit better right here. One of the conditions for the extension with Wes Scott said that the city would welcome an additional extension request if the owner is working with or in contract with a potential buyer. See, may need to consider one additional extension for up to a year. And so the, technically, it expired in the end of June. On June fifteenth, the new owner requested a one-year extension. The new owner has completed two pre-applications to date and is actually scheduled, is in the process of scheduling a third one for retail office and service uses. I'm not sure if the applicant representative is still here. His name is Tom Dillon. If he, if he is here, council can direct questions to him or myself if he is not available this evening. This evening, we're looking for either council direction or possibly we could even go ahead and approve it. But we could also wait till the next meeting if you'd like to approve it this evening. I have provided a motion in the agenda bill and in the presentation. I will take any sort of council questions at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone have any questions? Councilmember Shaffer.
Just for my own clarification, Director Thomas. This, this is, this is a brand new owner of the commercial property, correct? Wes Scott sold it and the the new owner is now requesting a, an extension.
That, that is correct. The new owner is requesting an additional one-year extension. That, that is correct. The new owner is requesting an additional one-year extension to submit a land use entitlement.
And related to that, I, you know, I, I know our relationship with West Scott is somewhat contentious, but I we don't really have any history uh pro or con with the new owner yet. Uh, I'd like to get your, just your feeling uh for that.
Uh, we've had a really good working relationship with the new owner, and not just us two, but DFA still has their, their barn remnants on there, so they're also giving DFA an extension um to keep their um pieces of their barn on the property a little bit longer as well. So I would say amongst the three parties, we're, we're looking pretty good.
Yeah, okay, go. That's good to know about the DFA uh extension as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Hoag.
I'd like to bring up something that I'm, I know that um Councilmember Langle had brought, brought it up before she left, but as part of this extension, can we request that that barn be fenced off to the public? Because it's currently in a state that people could walk onto that property and get hurt, frankly, in that barn. And I, I find that concerning. I, I wonder if we can request that that be fenced off.
Uh, Councilmember Hoag, that's actually a really good point. We can certainly ask um the new owner to do that, or for DFA uh to do that. And we could also have our building official go out there and do essentially a safety inspection as well.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I, I hear you are looking for direction, and I, I think it's reasonable to um move forward on whatever we need to do to approve this uh one-year extension. I think it's in line with what council had agreed to do, i- if we were in this situation that we had a, a buyer or a new owner who was planning to build something. So my only feedback that I already provided to Director Thomas is I, I saw the example of, or the kind of preliminary uh drawing of the configuration of the site. It, it looked, it, it had some awkwardness to it, just to be honest, and and uh it sounds like it, it is still fairly preliminary and needs some work. So um, that was my feedback. I, I just felt like, you know, we're really trying to make Main Street welcoming and that the buildings face the street and are um, you know, I guess I'll use the word welcoming, and, and feel pedestrian-friendly. So anyway, that was my feedback on that, and um, but that's not necessarily in regards to the extension.
Councilmember Isaacson.
Yeah, um, Director Thomas, could you bring up your pre-canned statement? And do we have to do the three, wave the three-touch for this? Since this is a discussion, not a decision.
You, I mean, it's up to council how you, you wave that, but you can wave it, or you can choose to.
Just vote.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two six four, approving the one-year commercial, affirming request for Duval Village.
Second. Great. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Hoag.
Can I make an amendment? I mean, I, I, I feel like we need to secure that barn. I don't know. I'd like to request that.
So I think that would be a question for Director Thomas and the attorney of whether or not that can be done in this agenda bill, for clarification.
Do you, I, I think that it could potentially be added, um, because it, we, we, we can provide a condition of it, like we did before with West Scott. Um, but I'll, let's hear from Daniel if we can as well.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think you could do that. Um, yes, I, I think that can be done.
So should I make a motion to amend and add some verbiage securing the barn and keeping the public out of the barn?
I don't know. So I think, um, I think an easy way to do it would be to make an amendment to direct um administration to um include conditions that secure the building. Simple as that.
Yeah.
So.
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, oh, uh, Director Lenishewski, before we go there.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a food for thought, too, maybe a timeframe. I know whenever we're dealing with our attorneys and they are going to put conditions on something or a project, like, hey, here, yes, you're going to need this, but you have sixty days to get it, because we don't want any ambiguity. Is that tomorrow? Is that, you know, when they're done, or something like that? So just consider thirty, sixty, ninety days are some standards that we try to use for actions like that.
Uh, and the question I would have is, council feel comfortable with staff making that assessment based on their professional experience?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. With that, do we have a motion to approve the amendment?
Yes.
Or I'm sorry, uh, do we have, all those in favor of approving the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And now we're on to our final item of business, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash sixty-five, ordinance adopting revised salary schedule for union employees for decision. Director Mason.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Can you quickly share my screen? All right, you know, I will just hop right to this. So this is just an overview of what we know so far. Uh, per agreement with the city's Teamsters collective bargaining unit, a classification and compensation study was completed by McGrath Human Resources Group. A new salary table was recommended with consistent increases between pay grades and steps and position placement based on market rates from comparable cities. Um, McGrath Human Resources Group first discussed a study with council in March, and then Teamster requested, uh, the Teamsters requested increases that affected June first, two thousand twenty-two with at least a five percent increase. And since last provided to council, the salary study has three changes, or not the salary study, but the salary schedule, I should say, has three changes. The stormwater quarter coordinator position was added at the same step as a project manager that was um omitted from the study. And then the wastewater maintenance tech one and two positions have been retitled as wastewater operator one and two. And then the position wastewater maintenance tech has been added to pay grade fifty-five at the same level as the public works maintenance techs, maintenance tech one. The estimated cost to, in two thousand twenty-two, to implement the salary schedule for the Teamsters is approximately ninety-three thousand eight hundred. A source of possible funding for the cost of implementing the salary schedule is uh ARPA revenue, which could be used on seller increases through two thousand twenty-three. But if there's not an appetite for use of ARPA for this type of expenditure, uh, new positions in the next biennium could be funded with ARPA, which can be discussed in more detail later in the um as the city goes through the budget process. So are there any questions?
Councilmember Schaefer.
I thought we approved this at our last meeting.
So you would have approved um the terms to go to the union. Um, the union then voted, approved it, and had these minor changes that they brought forth. So this is essentially, they've ratified the, the salary survey or the salary changes, and then it takes the formal vote of the council for final action.
Okay, then, thanks.
Is to adopt the salary schedule, which replaces the one that was adopted through the mid-biennium budget adjustment for two thousand twenty-two.
And Councilmember Mercer.
And just a, a very minor point of clarification to our commission. When you read through the slide, you referenced position one and two, I think, for wastewater, but the slide said position two and three. It's just nuanced, but I wanted to just get clarification as to which of those two was correct in terms of.
Well, let me bring that slide back up.
Just for the, the record, just again.
Got it. So um, the, the positions wastewater maintenance tech two and three, sorry, yes, have been retitled as wastewater operator one and two. And then the position wastewater maintenance tech one was added to the pay grade fifty-five at the same le, level as the public works maintenance tech one.
All right, thanks for clarifying it. I assume that's what you meant, but I just wanted to make sure that, that it was stated for the record. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
Does council have any questions?
Yeah, they're sorry.
Uh, Councilmember Isaacson.
For uh, Director Lenishewski, this, these changes, are they just aligning the appropriate titles with the, with the, for the job skills?
Yes, they, they are. So we had a request from the wastewater treatment plant. They did not want to be called maintenance techs one and uh, maintenance techs two and three. They wanted to stick with their current titles, which are wastewater operator uh two and three. And then we had kind of lumped the wastewater maintenance tech or the old wastewater operator one in with the public works main, maintenance tech. And they just requested that that get pulled out as its own separate title.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Councilmember Levitt.
Yeah, so is it, am I correct in thinking that the salaries have been submitted, and this is what they've come back with? But the funds to pay those salaries have not been decided on where those are coming from yet? Is that correct?
So let me bring up the estimated cost slide one more time, because it might be easier to explain.
So Director Mason, he's asking um where the, that we, his, his clarification is that we haven't decided where the funds are coming from yet?
Oh, I see how to pay for them, yes. So the options are to just pay with existing revenues and, and fund balance if we need to. Or we could, if, if council wanted to, um, and you don't have to make this decision tonight. If council wanted to, they could, we could pay for the increase or the cost of implementing the salary um, the new salary table with um American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Got it.
And as a point of clarification as well, the city has the cash on hand. Um, so it's not an issue of needing revenue to come in. We have the funds available.
That was, that is.
Yeah. All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash sixty-five, adopting an ordinance, amending the two thousand twenty-two salary schedules.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Let the record reflect, uh, two noes, Councilmember Naplin and Councilmember Hoag. Uh, the motion passes. And with that, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.